All right, welcome back to the November 22 regular meeting. Mr. Harp, do we have a closed session report?
Thank you, Mayor O'Neil. There is no closed session report this evening.
Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
All right, so we don't have anyone for invocation tonight? Right, okay, I'll take that and then Ms. Dixon will do the Pledge of Allegiance. And real quick, before we do this, I'm going to take the A1 ability to move an item. I'm going to take item four off the consent calendar, move it up in front of presentations, simply so that we can get some folks back to fighting fires. All right, so please, please rise and stand with me for the invocation. Lord, we thank you for this gathering of decision makers. We ask that you provide us wisdom and guidance so that we can, we can do your will. We ask that you watch over all of our men and women on the front lines, especially as we gather to recognize our fire department. We ask that you watch over those, those people who are still fighting fires all across our state. We ask that you watch over the families of those people who are fighting fires and we ask that you watch over those people who are in the fire's way. We ask that you watch over our men and women who are working at our hospitals. Please watch over those people who are sick. Please get them better. Please watch over those people who are healthy. Please keep them that way. And these things we ask by name. Amen.
Please join me in slitting the flag of our great nation. Place your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I am taking item four out of order. So I'm going to ask for our fire chief to come up first and discuss a little bit of what it's been like to be a firefighter this year and in particular, the last couple
Turn my mic on so that you could hear me. Jeff Boils, your fire chief. This last couple of months, our fire season obviously has grown beyond anything like we've ever seen in the state of California. We have sent from Newport Beach with our surrounding neighboring agencies firefighters up and down the state to over 15 different incidences now and well over 30 of our own personnel from here in Newport Beach. Some of them standing behind me here have been deployed on those incidents. We currently have four firefighters out in Los Angeles at the Bobcat Fire, which has decreased in the containment that they currently have. We have two firefighters up in Fresno and one up in Mendocino. But as you know, I've been reporting, they've been everywhere from San Diego all the way up to the, to the border, on the north end border. So our firefighters, if you saw our Facebook page with a video on there the other night, was taken by Captain Chad Pongelik. And we had a great plan to have some of the families come tonight to support them. And unfortunately, one of them ran into childcare issues a couple hours ago and another one had to divert over to Hoag Hospital because one of our firefighters had a medical issue just a couple hours ago. So I do have the family of Captain Pongelik behind me here, his wife and two teenage kids. That particular crew came to work on September 3rd. They were deployed on September 5th and they went from San Diego to San Bernardino up to Los Angeles, chasing fires all over the place. They came home on Saturday. They were home Saturday evening and Sunday and came back, reported back to work on Monday yesterday. So they will ultimately work a total of 19 out of 20 days in those 19 or 24 hour shifts. So the reason I wanted to bring the families behind me here, just so that they could get an idea of how much this community and how much this council does support them, and I know you'll read the resolutions here, but it's been difficult. COVID's been difficult on the entire global population, but this wildfire season has added an incredible layer of difficulty to the families as well that are trying to deal with homeschooling and our firefighters, husbands, fathers, dads being away from home. So I really appreciate you pointing them out or recognizing them, supporting them. And as you can see, they're pretty good showing behind me here. And I'll let you take it from here, Mr. Mayor.
That sounds good. So I'm going to read the resolution, say a couple words and then open it up to my fellow council members as well. So the resolution that we're proposing this afternoon is, whereas the Newport Beach Fire Department has more than a 100-year history of serving the Newport Beach community with safety, service, and professionalism, whereas the Newport Beach Fire Department employs 118 sworn fire personnel who normally work a 48-hour shift and has 38 personnel assigned each day to the city's eight fire stations, whereas fire personnel need to be able to respond to any situation on a moment's notice. Whereas providing mutual aid to other communities through the California Office of Emergency Services is typical in the course of business for fire departments throughout the state. Whereas the wildfire season started early with the first call for mutual aid on May 31st, 2020, and the Newport Beach Fire Department deployed a captain to Northern California near the Oregon border. Whereas over the course of a 43-day period from the end of July through early September, 26 fire personnel and one civilian from the Newport Beach Fire Department responded to 13 fires in California. Whereas two Newport Beach Battalion Chiefs led a team of five engines from Newport Beach, Costa Mesa, Fountain Valley, Huntington Beach, and Laguna Beach as they responded to three different fires over the course of two weeks. Whereas four Newport Beach fire engines responded as part of strike teams across the state. Whereas the department also deployed four overhead assignments to fill the positions of a safety officer, field observer, fire line paramedic, and base camp manager to multiple fires. Whereas for the first time in the department's history, a civilian was deployed for eight days serving as a damage inspection specialist. Whereas the personnel deployed faced new challenges due to the impacts of COVID, such as having limited access to shelter and food at the base camps. Whereas two of the fires Newport Beach Fire Department personnel responded to quickly became the second, which was the SCU Lightning Complex, and third, LNU Lightning Complex, largest in California history, as Mendocino is currently the largest. And whereas seven of the 20 largest fires in California history have occurred in the last seven, or the last four years, now therefore, the City Council of the City of Newport Beach resolves as follows. The City Council does hereby express support for the members of the Newport Beach Fire Department in their effort to, in their efforts to provide exceptional service to the Newport Beach community, as well as being ready to respond within 15 minutes to mutual aid requests that has the potential to take them far from home and their families for a two, for the two, for a two-week period. This is, this is something that the council obviously takes very seriously. We look constantly at the budget every year and within that budget, it's important that we remember what the line items mean. They mean the people not only there, but the families that are with them. And this is something that a lot of people oftentimes, when they see the rigs rolling through town, they, they probably think, especially because you wear uniforms, the whole point of a uniform is to look uniform. But each of you are individuals. Each of you have families at home, parents you grew up with, siblings. Each one has a unique circumstance and one of the great things about living in Newport Beach that I've heard over and over and over again is how often our residents get to know you as individuals. And I wanted to add a layer of, of knowing you by, by talking about your families as well, by making sure that people realize that, you know, you come to work thinking that you're on a 48-hour shift and two weeks later, you're coming home because you've been jumping from fire to fire to fire. And that's the life that you've chosen and the life that we appreciate very, very much. So I just wanted to say thank you from bottom of our hearts. And so I'm going to open it up to any of my fellow council members if they'd like to say anything. So you, we can, I'll tell you, okay, we'll start with Mr. Avery, then go over to Mr.
It's just been something, I think, for, certainly for me and for everyone to, we had this invisible attack going on for months on, and of just such a threat. And then to shift and have this very visible threat, another attack coming from everywhere in our state. And there was a, to me, a purity in the mission of this fire department and all responders to this very visible threat. There was no indecision. There's no politics. It's duty, it's bravery, it's brotherhood, it's sisterhood. And then you've got the support of family, friends, and certainly your community. It's, in a way, it's a, it's a beautiful thing because we've got a society right now that's really struggling in so many ways and have something so pure going on, just, just absolutely selfless. Thank you.
Mr. Hurdman.
Seems like we've been waking up for the last two, three weeks, maybe even a month, turn on the news, listen to the status of the fires throughout the state, go through the day, sit down at 5 o'clock, turn on the news, listen to the status of the fires that are going on throughout the state. And then we get these regular updates from your chief. And I, for one, am in awe of the job you do, of your dedication, of the profession that you've chosen to work in. I couldn't be prouder of you, or prouder of saying that I'm from the city of Newport Beach and in support of all our first responders, especially at this point in time right now for all of you guys that are standing in the back and your families. I thank you and I recognize you along with this resolution and encourage you, and I, which probably isn't even necessary because of your level of dedication, but encourage you to keep up the great work. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dixon.
It's hard to come up with unique words when we're all so want to say and communicate such pride. One thing I think about when I see the news in the morning and the evening about these horrible fires all over our state, number one, I think about our Newport Beach. There was an image that Jeff, you shared with an image of Newport Beach at one of the fires, I think in San Diego, wherever it was, and to see Newport Beach on the front hood of the car, it was really a proud moment. But also I've thought about how all of you who are on, right on the scene and fighting the fires are, are experiencing the, watching people's homes and businesses erupt and be destroyed, erupt in flames and be destroyed and the emotional tug that goes through your own mind and yet you're fighting these fires to save their homes. And it's just such a hard emotional, as well as physical endurance that you're going through. And it's just so important for all of us and for all of you to realize how all of us value and respect and honor what you're doing and to keep our community healthy and safe during the pandemic and then to keep other communities, protect other communities. It's just noble work and just honored that we can call our Newport Beach Fire Department our own and be honored for what you do. So thank you for bringing such honor to the city of Newport Beach. Thank you.
Mr. Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, all I can do is just thank you to all the wives, thank you to all the husbands, thank you to all the children, and of course, thank you to the firefighter, it's himself and herself. Just thank you so darn much. Thank you.
Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. So all of you in the background for a treat. I love to ask Chief Boils questions. He's such a smart man, but he's also too kind when dealing with me. Chief, you said we had firefighters dealing with the fires. Again, how, how many acres burned in this fire?
Overall, in the state of California, we're over 3 million now, last time I saw an update.
And you told me that's the biggest in the history of the state, correct?
Correct.
And what's a typical day like for our fighters that go, that are deployed to these areas?
On a 12-hour shift, I'll give you a quick synopsis. When they do a 12-hour shift, they wake up about 5 o'clock in the morning, try and get some food and head over to what we call an incident briefing. From the briefing, you get an assignment, hop in, fire engine with the strike team that you're with, deploy out to the area that you're going to, and then they'll work for the 12 hours, sometimes 13, 14 hours. By the time they roll back into what we call a camp area, it can be as late as 10 o'clock. And if the food lines are closed down, they're trying to find pizza or something else on the fly, take a shower if you can, brush your teeth. The captains and strike team leaders have to do some paperwork and usually get to bed around midnight and back up at 5 to repeat.
So I got to ask, does Uber Eats or Domino's show up with pizza or?
I don't, have they done that lately? I haven't been on one in two years. No, they're saying no.
Okay. Well, I, I said fire, I said fighter when I said, when they're deployed because it sounds like essentially warfare. And I view you as being like a part of the front line, like our military. It's, it's incredibly honorable and I know it's, it's more difficult than any of us would understand. If there are 168 hours in a week, and I don't think you get real rest while you're up there. I don't think it's like sitting on a, you know, you know, the sofa or the bed at home. I think it's very tough. And you're up there for two weeks, that's 336 hours. I've never heard of that, those kinds of shifts outside of the US military. What you're doing takes a lot of courage, which I, I think we have a segment that's going to show how scary it can be dealing with fire. And during that time, obviously, you're a little nervous, even though you're trained, your family is obviously very nervous. And so much is reliant upon you and your ability to recall your training and to perform the highest level possible. So I would just like to echo what my colleagues are saying, that we honor, respect, and we thank you for your service to the city and for the greater community, not just in Newport Beach or California, but even to neighboring states that suffer the consequences if fires got out of control. And this is a historic fire that will probably be talked about for a very long time, like many battles that are talked about by veterans. And we thank you very much for your service and God bless.
All right, and finally, Ms. Brenner.
I don't want to be redundant and over the years, I've expressed my appreciation many times for the job that you guys all do. But I just wanted to say that one of the things that really strikes me about the way our community feels about our public service employees is it is such a unifying thing and that even though we have politics that divides our community at times, it's like the one thing that everyone in our community seems to agree on is that we love our public safety employees and we appreciate you all so much. And, and I just hope that you always remember how much this community loves you.
Awesome. So we're going to go to a public comment on this item, if we have any in the community All right, seeing none, do we have any calls? Look at you. Awesome. Well, again, I wanted to say thank you so much. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and move staff recommendation. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Muldoon. Any discussion? I think we've had enough. All right, let's go ahead and vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Awesome. All right, we're going to move back into our regular agenda. If this was the item you were here for, you are welcome to go back and fight fires. All right. So we're going to go into presentations now and we'll start with the proclamation recognizing International Literacy Day.
I think you might be, I think. Sorry about that. I'd like to introduce our literacy coordinator, Cheryl Weiss, and the Chair of the Board of Library and Trustee, Paul Walken, Paul Watkins is here, he's here as well.
I'm not Paul Watkins. Hi, good evening, everybody. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members, for having us and recognizing literacy day once again. Many people are surprised by the National Center for Education's statistic that shows that 21% of adults, 43 million people in the United States, are either literate or functionally illiterate. And appalled by the fact that between 40 and 60% of young people that enter college need remedial education in both English and in math. The statistics around illiteracy are staggering, I think we all will agree, but nothing more so than knowing how disenfranchised people become when they struggle to read and write, when even simple tasks become paralyzing obstacles. The mission of Newport Mesa Pro Literacy, or the Literacy Services Program at the library, is to develop the literacy skills of adults, to empower them to become successful in all aspects of their lives, in work, at home, and in the community. Last year, our learners set 420 literacy goals, of which 239 were met. Among those goals met were five new citizens, three high school graduates, seven accepted to colleges, 10 who got promotions or jobs for the first time, and five who became community volunteers for the first time. One learner who entered a writing contest participated in a statewide reading of her winning letter. Her daughter, who joined the Zoom of the event, put in the chat box as her mom was reading, and I'm quoting, "It is my mom that just read that letter and I just wanted to say thank you for this opportunity. The programs at the library really changed her in such a positive way and influenced her in the best ways possible." Literacy changes lives, but the ripple effect goes much further than the person that we're working with. It affects all of us and it affects our families and our communities. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Cheryl. Paul, did you want to say anything?
I think.
Yeah, I think she did pretty well, too. Cheryl, why don't you stay up here? I'm going to, I'm going to read a proclamation for you. Whereas the need for a highly literate citizenry is necessary as Newport Beach moves toward an increasingly challenging future. And whereas approximately 10% of the residents in Newport Beach and many of the adults employed within the city are lacking the literacy skills necessary to meet these challenges. And whereas lack of literacy skills impacts not only their lives and the lives of their families, but their ability to work productively and their full participation as citizens, residents, and employees of our city. And whereas Newport Mesa Pro Literacy, a program of the Newport Beach Public Library, works with adults seeking to develop their literacy skill to empower them to achieve greater success in their lives at home, at work, and in the community. And whereas Newport Mesa Pro Literacy has, along with other literacy programs around the state, offered virtual literacy events this September in recognition of National Literacy Month and an observance of International Literacy Day. Now therefore, I, Will O'Neil, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, do hereby proclaim September 22nd, 2020 as Literacy Awareness Day in the City of Newport Beach and urge my fellow citizens to learn more about the importance of literacy and to become involved with literacy in the community. And by the way, normally I would take a picture with you in the chambers. Here's my request. Yesterday, the Central Library reopened. I would love to take a picture with you at some point this week with this in the Central Library that has finally been reopened, if that's okay with you. So I'm, by the way, Tim, kudos, man, seriously, on getting the Central Library back open. And Cheryl, I really can't say enough about your program. It's been such a beacon of hope in, in our, in our city for so long and the amount of work that you've been able to get volunteers to do to help other people, you know, achieve literacy and open up the world to them is just a staggering achievement. And so I'm just so, so darn proud of you. So anyway, I'm, I'm going to make sure I get this and then you and I will go into, you know, the library at some point this week. So congratulations. Thank you very much. Duffy, I missed you there. Go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to reiterate, as Mayor, I think, well, I know that the most moving event that I went to was seeing those graduates of the literacy program and it's something I enjoyed and I'll never forget. Thank you.
Awesome. I know, I missed that one this year. One of many things, I suppose. But we'll, we'll go into the next one, which is SE's update. Do we have James here for us? Is he?
Yes.
Oh, okay. There you go.
Can you see my, excuse me, can you see my screen?
Yes, we can. It should say, it says our commitment to California.
That's it.
All right, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. James Peterson, Government Relations Manager for Southern California Edison. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. The first thing I'd like to mention is how grateful Edison is for the work that firefighters from Newport Beach and a lot of other communities are doing. The work that they're doing does two things. Not only does it protect the infrastructure and allow us, after fires burn through, to get in and do repairs for that infrastructure, that power is directly connected to the residents of Newport Beach. Without being able to generate and deliver that power, because the work that firefighters are doing, it would be really difficult for our company to do what it does best, which is providing safe, reliable power. So we're very grateful to Chief Boils, the city, and all the firefighters. We want to provide you with a quick update, a reminder of some of the programs that Edison is doing to address wildfires. And it's really a timely thing for us to discuss this, given the fires that are going on, but also because September is National Preparedness Month. So we, like many public safety, public safety agencies, are promoting this concept of first, get ready, next, get set, and go. It's a common theme that we're all sharing to make sure that people are preparing before a wildfire threatens you, preparing for the possibility of a wildfire and evacuation steps, and then to make sure that you're ready to go when you get that order that you need to evacuate. And this is particularly important in Newport Beach, which thankfully, there's not been significant wildfire activity in the high fire risk areas, but you never know when that might happen, so it's important to be prepared. We also just briefly wanted to touch on the, the COVID issue. We continue to have to do our work to make repairs to keep the grid safe and reliable and we know that that impacts customers who are doing teleworking and tele schooling from home. But it's really important that we continue to do that and I think, thankfully, we've been able to, to move some of our, our outages that are necessary for that work to accommodate residents and try and do as much of that work in off-hours overnight and to avoid any kind of overdue impact to, to customers. We also have a number of programs that assist customers. For example, we have battery backups and we have our medical baseline and care programs that help customers that are dependent upon medical advice, medical devices that are electricity dependent. So as the mayor was commenting, this has been an incredibly destructive fire season this year. We, we have seen some of the record fires and across the state, there's about 3.7 million acres of fires that have burned a large portion of California. That is roughly 3.7% of the entire state of California that's burned, just this year alone. And today, we have the Creek, the Castle, and the Bobcat Fires, three of the largest. They burned about 500,000 acres as of today. That Creek Fire surrounds one of our generation facilities, the Big Creek Hydroelectric Plant, which is where our company was actually founded 130 years ago. So the work to, to protect and restore the lines around that plant is critically important. But this is a trend that we're going to continue seeing. There is no true fire season anymore. It's, it's year-round. We also know that there are areas in Newport Beach that are at risk. So the map before you that you see is developed by both CAL FIRE and the CPUC. And you can see some of the areas that are at greatest risk, Newport Coast, Buck Gully, Muddy Canyon, San Joaquin Hills. Most of this area is, is open land, but it abuts and even covers some residential neighborhoods. So what we've learned over the last year and what's new for 2020 is that while we may declare a public safety power shut-off, this is a concept we've talked about in the past, it's rarely utilized in, in Orange County. So we didn't actually have any, any outages in the last year due to PSPS in Orange County. And we continue to refine this program with different infrastructure so that we can reduce the number of customers impacted. Some of the improvements we've made over the last year, we think are going to lead to about a 30, 30% reduction in the number of customers that are impacted. And in 2019, we had about 122,000 of our 15 million customers impacted by PSPS and we're hoping to improve on that as well. So the ways that we try to address these PSPS incidents and threats to, to our infrastructure is three primary ways. It's hardening the grid, it's bolstering our situational awareness with a number of different techniques, and then different operations that we employ. And this identifies some of the ways that we're doing that. So we have, we've made a lot of improvement in 2019 by deploying over 850 weather stations, 160 wildfire camera, 161 wildfire cameras. And then we also have a lot of work that's gone into our meteorology and prediction science. We've replaced about 700 miles so far with insulated wires just in 2019 and we're going to be doing more in 2020. And these covered conductors are essentially hard plastic that surrounds the wires so that if there is a spark or if a tree falls on one of the lines, it's not going to trigger a fire. We also have a number of other devices, switches and, and fast We also have a number of other devices, switches and fast-acting fuses. We have about 3,000 of those that have been deployed, all which are new to our system and part of the over $3 billion effort we've put into hardening our grid and in the effort of preventing wildfires. So I mentioned that we have meteorologists as part of our team. We have them on staff. They work 24/7. They're looking based off of the data that comes from our weather monitoring stations, but also a number of other sources, the National Weather Service, different universities. And we, part of what those weather stations are doing is looking at specific canyons where we know that there's a fire history and looking at the humidity in those areas, the fuel intensity of some of the vegetation that's in those areas, and combining it into some pretty sophisticated modeling to look where fires might happen. Here, we can see some of those weather stations. In Newport Beach, we have those four, and they're highlighted with the green dots. And then also, on the other slide, the two wildfire cameras, those are located on Signal Peak, and they have a pretty wide span. They can identify smoke and flames from pretty far out. This data is all available online to anyone that's interested in it. There's a link at the end of this deck where you can access these and literally see what our meteorologists and firefighters are looking at to detect dishect fires in the area. Also, with the weather stations, you can see what the wind speeds are. They're updated every 10 minutes, and it's all live 24/7, available on the internet. Vegetation management is a huge portion of what we're doing to try to reduce the possibility of contact with our wires that could trigger a fire. So each year, we're inspecting about a million, one, million-one acres, I'm sorry, million-one trees across our service area, which covers 50,000 square miles. So in the high-fire-risk areas, we're looking at about half a million trees. We're then cutting back those trees to make sure that we have a minimum of a 12-foot clearance so that there isn't any impact. And then also, for the very tall trees, which might come into contact with our lines, we actually make sure that there's about 200 feet between the trees and the wires to make sure there isn't anything that might fall on them. Our public safety power shut-off is one of our tools, but it's sort of a tool of last resort. We want to make sure that we're doing all that mitigation work in advance so that we don't have to use this tool. And then when we do use it, we really try to focus it so that it's limited to the minimum impact on customers, and we try to give advanced warnings. So in some context for how often this tool is used, in 2019, we had a total of 16 PSPS events, not only nine of which led to actual de-energizations. And an event is just simply that process of looking ahead about a week to see what the wind conditions and potential fire conditions are going to be. And like I mentioned, there's about 122,000 unique customers that were impacted last year out of our 15 million total. Those grid improvements are going to continue to allow us to use PSPS in more limited cases and impact fewer customers. Part of that PSPS process is we have a number of decision points, the first being, we're working with the National Weather Service to see if there are red flag warnings in the territory. The meteorologists are then looking at weather data and weather modeling to see about the likelihood based also on historic conditions that a fire might result. We have a fire protection index that utilizes weather forecasts and fuel conditions. We look at wind speeds and whether or not they're expected to exceed the National Weather Service's advisory levels. We work with public agencies to make sure that we're getting their data points as well. If there are additional concerns that come from a local government or public safety officials, that goes into our decision-making. And we also look at the impacts, about how it might impact particular facilities, especially public safety agencies, water districts, and traffic controls. And then we also have a factor in operational situations. So operational considerations such as potentially impacted circuits, whether or not there's flying debris or down wires that might already exist because of other reasons. And this is an important one. For the timeline, we're looking four to seven days in advance at what the conditions are like. Three days ahead, we begin working with local governments to make sure that they're aware of the conditions that are coming. We provide email, and then also, we have regular meetings with public safety officials. Two days in advance, we're providing notifications to customers that this is a possibility. A day in advance, we again update customers. And then on the day of an event, we try to notify customers that there's an imminent shutdown. We can't always do this, but we make a best effort attempt. When we get a notification from the crews that are on the ground that conditions are very severe, it doesn't always allow for us to send that last immediate communication before we need to power down. So we've improved our communications on our websites. If there's going to be a PSPS events, we have maps, and we've come up with a new process so that it's more accurate, more precise maps. It's easier for customers to look up their address to see if they might potentially be impacted. We also have resources out in the community. We work with community centers, and we also have vehicles that provide updates about the PSPS, as well as water, snacks, a place to charge your cellphone, those sorts of things. Those maps are all linked to our website now, and we're having much tighter notifications with more precise targeting of ZIP codes. We're using things like Nextdoor, working with Google on some new communication strategies as well, then also working to make sure that we're providing notifications to mobile phones by connecting with law enforcement and public safety agencies who are forwarding our messaging through those devices, Nixwell, for example. We have a number of customer care programs that speak to the issue. As I mentioned, we have the community crew vehicles. They're essentially vans that go out to provide these services, water, blankets, et cetera. And then we have rebate programs for those that might need to get battery backup for certain devices. We also provide support for purchasing generators. And then we also work very closely to make sure that our critical care customers, those that are medically dependent on devices, are getting notification, whether that even requires a knock on their door of a PSPS. We go so far as to do that as well. We've also spent quite a bit of time working with communities, making presentations, both at council meetings, but also community meetings. It's been a bit more challenging because of COVID to do that, but so far, we've done about 550 meetings and presentations. We began to convert over to the online versions of this, and I think some of your staff members were actually able to participate in one of the community meetings we had back in May and June. We recorded those, and so that if council members or the public are interested, you can go to our website and listen to that material from those meetings. We also, again, are focused on vulnerable communities. So those that are disabled or need extra help, we have a number of programs. And again, the links for all that is going to be at the end of this presentation. We have utilized our shareholder investments, our charitable investments. We're spending about $20 million a year in charitable giving, but then we also have employee giving. Some of those things have resulted in very tangible benefits to Orange County. So for example, last year, we provided about $4 million to the Orange County Fire Authority to fund an innovative pilot project allowing for a helicopter to be leased, and it has special capabilities, nighttime fire capabilities. We also fire with local fire departments, working to help train about 2,200 firefighters on electrical safety each year. And we provide funding to the California Fire Safe Council that then provides grants to local fire safe councils. One of the recipients recently was the Greater Laguna Coast Fire Safe Council. And then lastly, we did a Crystal Cove cleanup last September where we went and were able to get about 50 Edison volunteers to go to Crystal Cove in conjunction with the California Parks Foundation to help clean up some of the brush there, the non-native vegetation that's also highly flammable. So here are some of the resources that we would encourage folks to go to. First, we would love your feedback on what we're doing right, what we can improve upon. We also strongly encourage residents to sign up for our PSPS alerts. It's really important to know that just because you're an Edison customer doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to find out about an outage, whether it's PSPS or some other kind. You have to proactively go to our website and authorize us to use your email or your cellphone to send you texts. So we highly encourage people to do that. And then again, like I said earlier in the program, it's important to be prepared, develop that safety kit, and make sure that you're aware of the tools and techniques that I've talked about here, of how to find out about outages and making sure you're prepared to respond to those if one should happen. So there's some additional slides here that provide those resources, and we would welcome people to take a look at these. And if you have questions, I will provide my name and contacts, and be happy to answer any questions for staff or any member of the public.
Okay. Do we have any questions? Yep, Ms. Dixon.
Hi, James. This is Diane. I appreciate this excellent presentation because of fires are clearly on our minds as we've just been talking this afternoon. On the other side of the issue relating to power outages, could you comment just for edifying the situation that for our community, during the hot, high-temperature days, maybe they're past, but there were power outages throughout the community in Southern California, Orange County? How do, is it your same program, the PSPS program that we all need to be familiar with, but they come suddenly, I guess as a fire would? But would you two talk about that? Because I think it creates a lot of confusion in the community when we have experienced power outages.
Sure. So it's important to remember that there are multiple types of outages. There's planned outages for work that we need to do on the grid to make repairs. There's emergency outages, say, for example, someone hit a pole. And then the recent example that we had was due to the demand on the grid. So in the past 20 years, we have not had power outages like were threatened because of the early, let's see, I guess it was about two weeks ago now, that were possibilities. The way that that works is that CAL ISO is the entity that manages the power supply for the grid in California. And the system was developed two decades ago to identify how outages would happen. They have to, and each group is not identified by a particular city, it's small neighborhoods across the grid, and they're identified as a particular group so that one city isn't overly impacted by an outage. What happens is CAL ISO notifies the utilities about the lack of sufficient resources, and they go into a phased process where they begin warning of an outage, they identify which groups to be impacted. And we spread the word to the customer.
Hey, James.
Of communities.
Hang on, hang on one second. James, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry. You were breaking up there. So could you start the last sentence, kind of where you were going with that one?
Sure. So CAL ISO lets us know when there is a likely outage going to occur, and as we get that information, we share it with our customers. Unfortunately, it's a very rapid process. When CAL ISO notifies us, we have about 10 minutes to let our customers know, but we do a lot of work letting customers know that you're in the group that could be de-energized as soon as we get that information. So that could be a couple of days in advance. It's just that last notification is super challenging in that 10 minutes we have to notify them that it's happening now.
Well, I think what is concerning more on a broader macro basis is that, does the grid have enough power capability? And it's really a larger statewide question. What can we do as citizens to ensure that we have adequate power supplies in this state?
We do have adequate power supplies, and one of the tools that we use is we have a demand-response program. So some Newport Beach residents may already subscribe to this. Essentially, what you do is you agree that your AC could be lowered in the event that we're short on power, and that actually helped us prevent outages quite a bit about two weeks ago. So more subscription to that program, just getting people to have their AC turned up to 78 as opposed to, you know, 72, that actually was really effective in helping prevent outages in a lot of areas. So it's a measure of conservation that can help stop this. And given the fact that we haven't had outages in 20 years, it's a pretty good track record that we're not, we don't have a supply problem, it's just managing the resource problem.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Avery.
Yeah, thank you. It was very interesting. So is Edison recommending generators to some customers now?
No, we're not recommending generators, but we have these various programs that allow you to purchase a generator or get a rebate on a generator.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Saying none, no more? We'll end that. Thank you very much, James. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Madam Clerk.
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Okay. Well, now we'll go to City Council announcements and oral reports from City Council and committee activities. We'll start with Mr. Duffield. Mr. Muldoon? Mr. Hurdman?
Yeah, I have some. So people have been asking lately, where's Jeff? Where's Jeff? Where's Jeff been for the last two weeks? This is where I've been, and this is what I've been doing. I work with staff on future agenda items for the Tidelands Water Qualities Committee going into 2021, structuring our agendas and making a timeline of projects for this committee. Reviewed proposed ordinances dealing with the use of single-use plastics in light of COVID. The Tidelands Water Quality Committee did quite a bit of work on this before COVID hit us, and with COVID coming about, the committee thought it might be a good idea to take a look at the recommended ordinances in light of COVID. So we're going to, that's one of the projects we're going to be working on. Probably one of the most time-consuming things that I did in the last two weeks was prepare for and attend the Board of Supervisors meeting where Councilwoman Dixon and I continued to advocate for the people of Newport Beach related to the general aviation improvement program. And I participated in a phone conference where we made preparations for the third talk that we are involved in with the FAA, although that has been canceled in light of Chief Justice Ginsburg's death. That has been canceled, and we'll have our, we'll just stay on schedule with our fourth meeting. Our focus of these talks is commercial aviation, where we don't talk with them about general aviation. Our talks focus on that. So that's what I've been doing for the last couple of weeks, in addition to reading hundreds of emails and working with constituents and responding to constituents. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to follow on that, yes, the mayor and myself and Councilmember Hurdman were at the Board of Supervisors last Tuesday when they were considering the lease documents, lease agreements with the two proposed flight-based operation companies, Clay Lacy and ACI. And it was a good day for Newport Beach. We've been working on this with, importantly, with our residents, with the activist citizens that we have in our community and always have had, that we are united. We were talking a little bit ago about the fire department. We're all united about our public safety personnel. We're all united on our airport issues. And this was the first time that there has ever been any, I have to choose my words carefully, definition of operations relating to general aviation at John Wayne Airport, because general aviation operations are excluded from the settlement agreement except for noise controls, and that it has always been. But as far as operations at John Wayne Airport, general aviation has been excluded. So for the first time in our history, we have put some land use constraints around the facilities that will have general aviation aircraft pilot, small planes piloted by plane pilots, as well as the jets. So it'll be more small planes than there were originally, and more space for them to be tied down or in hang- be tied down or in hangars. So as a city, we all should be pleased that there are constraints and that will allow us to continue to address our quality of life issues, and I believe we're on that road. Now, the issues are not over, as Mr. Hurdman just talked about. We have a lot of remaining issues on the other side, the commercial side of the airport. But as far as general aviation, it was a very satisfying end result. As far as announcements, I think that's it on my announcement. I just want to propose a new A1 tonight on item 17 related to the boardwalk safety. Many members of the community will be here. It came to my attention when I read the staff report last Thursday on this item that we did not specifically address SURIs. So that's a separate issue because SURIs are currently prohibited on the boardwalk. And so I would like to propose for future agendizing additional restrictions concerning SURI use on the peninsula. So if I may do that, Mayor, I appreciate that. And I think that's all for now, and we'll come back to the other A1 items, I imagine. So thank you very much.
Okay. Ms. Brenner.
Yes, I'd like to show a slide about the arts survey that is being distributed to our community. I believe we have a slide on that. And I've been asking since before I even got on council that we do more outreach into our community to find out how the community feels about our arts efforts and whether they're supportive of what we're doing, whether they'd like us to be doing something else, whether they want a different emphasis. And so we, our Arts Commission has arranged this survey, and now it's imperative that we get our community to actually go there and take this survey. Because for our council to well represent the community and do what you would like us to do in the way of arts, we need to know what that is that you want us to do. So this is a really important survey, and I'm just encouraging everyone possible to fill it out and let us know what you're thinking. Another announcement I have is that we have a new code enforcement officer who is named Joshua Hernandez, who works on the weekends. And one of my constituents notified me this weekend that he was very responsive. She called in because there were mobile auto detailing units in her alley that were draining their residue into the gutter, and she thought that that was illegal, and she called Joshua. Joshua came out. The people at the mobile detailing unit told her that it was okay because it was all biodegradable. Joshua confirmed that it's not okay, even if it is biodegradable, that that runoff has to be captured. And so the code enforcement number is 644-3215, and I'm just really excited that we have someone who's working on weekends on that. I do have a troubling announcement. My, in Corona del Mar, people are going to, for the next three nights, I believe it is, Dave, that they're going to hear noise on PCH because they're having to do some boring into the concrete to prepare for the resurfacing that is going to be done on PCH. So fortunately, it won't be in the same place for a long period of time, but the residents in Corona del Mar who are near PCH may be hearing that noise during the night. And I just want you to know, I'm turning off my cellphone tonight, so don't call me. I can't do anything about it, and in the long run, we'll be appreciative that the highway will be resurfaced. I only have one other announcement. I would like to A1, a discussion of our general plan update. We, you know, we kind of started out with our general plan update committee that was looking at a comprehensive process for figuring out what Newport is going to look like in the future. And then we got sidetracked by the RENA numbers from the state, and we panicked when we found out that we had to come up with all of these housing units. And so we created the Housing Element Advisor, Update Advisory Committee, and their focus really is on coming up with these units that we need to have. But we have a lot of other considerations. They have decided that they have enough on their plate with finding these housing units and that doing the circulation element was not something that they could handle. So that was decided that that would go to our planning commission. Well, that decision was made not here at the council level, and we're the ones that are responsible. I know I was involved in some conversations about that, and other people were involved in conversations about that, but the conversations were not held here at the council level. And I think Jim Mosher says it often enough that we sometimes start to maybe tune a deaf ear, but the business of the public is supposed to be done in the public. And I think that we, there's a lot of elements of that general plan. There's the affordable housing element, there's the circulation element, there's the environmental justice element, there's a variety of things that still need to be talked about, and I'd like for us to talk about them here at the council level so that the public has the benefit of knowing how we got to the point that we said the circulation element was going to go to the planning commission. When it was discussed at the last planning commission meeting, they didn't seem really excited about having to be in charge of this. Eric Wigan, Chair Wigan, asked several times if there was a planning commissioner that would like to work with Debbie Stevens from the Housing Element Update Committee on this circulation element, and nobody volunteered. And I understand that because transportation and circulation is not really probably their expertise. But we need to talk about that, in my opinion. I would like for us to talk about it here at the council level so that we get all these questions answered that the public is posing to us. So that would be my request for an A1 item.
So you're very welcome to do that. Are we bringing that at the next meeting? Yeah, so I just want you to know, we're actually bringing that to the next meeting.
We're bringing an update by grace, but--
Oh, no, 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 no. Sorry. We're actually bringing an amendment to the, a potential amendment to the resolution that created the subcommittee on that exact issue. So there will be a full discussion at the council level. We'll bring it back for A1, but I just want you to know that is absolutely coming back for discussion the way that you've laid it out. Mr. Avery?
I have none.
Okay. All right, I've got a couple of slides also. All right. The annual shred event over at Harbor Day School parking lot is going to be on Saturday, October 17th, 8:00 AM to noon. It's a free event. Proof of Newport Beach residency is required. We'll go to the next one. And then today is National Voter Registration Day. If you are not registered to vote, please go to ocvote.com/registration if you are and would like to just double-check. You can always do the same thing at the Secretary of State website. And then Newport Harbor High School, it's started up again. I was able to meet with my mentee briefly, which was really nice to get to know him. High school students are going through so much this year. I would, you know, really recommend that folks try to get into the lives of our high schools and high schoolers and, you know, put in some positive affirmation there. We had a TCA board meeting. Quick reminder, there are two boards for the TCA. There's the San Joaquin, which is basically the 73, and the Foothill Eastern, which is the 241, and the 133. The Foothill Eastern is often the board that you will see in the newspaper. Sometimes some of the political skirmishes that occur down in South County spill over into TCA. And so the last meeting was interesting. We had a response to a grand jury report that focused almost mostly on, not entirely, but mostly on the Foothill Eastern, but San Joaquin got dragged into some of the responses. And fortunately, the finances at San Joaquin are doing well. We're paying down the debt, and thanks actually to Newport Beach's participation, there's now a comprehensive debt policy at TCA, which is a big deal. Yesterday, we held, right across the way in the community room, we held a blood donation event with the help of Supervisor Michelle Steele. And I just want to say in particular to Laura Detwiler, thank you for making sure that that one went off without a hitch. And then this Thursday, we've got a finance committee meeting at 3:00 PM. And also, schools are likely, elementary schools are likely to reopen next week in Newport Mesa. I am giving everyone fair warning, do not speed through school zones. The schools will be back, so do not go faster than the posted speed limit of 25 around schools, starting at least next week. And then one other thing to note, there will be a change of traffic patterns around schools as well, simply because they're going to be doing a half at the, half the students will be in the morning, half the students will be in the afternoon, which means you're going to have a middle-of-the-day crossover between both of them. So you are going to notice a lot more traffic around elementary schools going forward, at least in the coming year. And then one last thing, the business reopening subcommittee, when we talked, would like to A1 a discussion at some point to figure out how to maintain outdoor dining in some fashion. We were hearing just great things about that. So, hey, we'll go into consent. So, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, matters which council members--
Oh, I apologize. You're right. I skipped right over that. All right. We'll go to matters which council members have asked to be placed on a future agenda. The first is consideration of opening parks and playground equipment. If you'd like to see this brought back, please raise your hand.
That's everyone except for council members Brenner and Duffield, I'm sorry, and Hurdman.
Okay. And then second is resolution to announce the city's commitment to end child marriage in California. If you'd like to see this brought back, please raise your hand.
Everyone again, except for council members Brenner and Hurdman.
Okay. We'll move into consent. Madam Clerk.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 13. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
All right. With the note that item four had already been pulled and approved, we'll go around the horn. Mr. Duffield.
I have none.
Mr. Muldoon.
I have none, but I'd like to make a brief statement, item five, to save time, as opposed to pulling, if that's okay.
Well, real quick, does anyone have any intention of pulling item five? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. Just briefly, this proposition is going to make it so that individuals convicted of sex trafficking of children, rape of an unconscious person, or felony assault deadly weapon will be deemed to be a violent offense, which will restrict someone from early release from prison. Someone had asked why the city would consider this to be official business. The health and welfare of the United States citizens falls under the states per the 10th Amendment, and the cities have an obligation to enforce those laws. And I can think of nothing more important than enforcing the health and welfare of victims within the city limits. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Hurdman.
I have none.
Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question on 11. I don't know if it needs to be polled as much, may I just ask a question of--
Sure, go ahead.
Mr. Stafford? Would you mind coming? Please, thank you. I know you are, the PD has submitted this agreement. Could you tell me what will be happening, or tell all of us, what will be happening differently from an enforcement of the firings? Because if there's, anything I hear about the firings is really about enforcement because we have the non-wood burning and then the recyclable materials. And I hear from residents on the peninsula that they never see anybody enforcing this. So is this firm going to be enforcing our current regulations regarding firings?
Ms. Dixon and members of the City Council, this is, this is a continuation of the same contract. This is a new contract with the same firm, under the same terms and conditions as we have had since 2015. It's pretty carefully laid out, both in the agreement and in the RFP, which you don't have access to tonight. But the RFP specifies the ambassador duties, and it is largely an education of beachgoers, firing users. And that will continue to be, that has not changed.
There's no enforcement? It's just education?
They're not empowered to enforce specifically. It's specifically laid out as an ambassador duty, which is to educate people on what the firings are supposed to be used for, what fuel can be burned, and which firings. The enforcement is, stops at asking politely to do what they're supposed to do. If it continues beyond that, they, they're instructed to call the police.
Do they do that?
They do.
We have records of them reporting into the police?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, go ahead. Ms. Brenner.
I'm sorry, did you tell us what hours they work?
They're scheduled, they have been scheduled for the past few years and will be, continue to be scheduled from 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM, seven days a week.
And they're at various locations where we have firings?
They're at two locations, at the Bellbo up here where there's firings, and also in CDM Main Beach.
Okay.
Can I ask another question?
All right. Yeah, last one.
Mr. Stafford, so in the staff report, it says education and enforcement related to the firings.
I might have to defer to my colleague, Deputy Chief Birch, on that. However, it is, they're not empowered under the municipal code to enforce the ordinance. And then the CDP requires that we provide ambassador service to educate the public on the use of the firings. Enforcement, like I said, stops at, please use the proper fuel in this, and if they're uncooperative or if they refuse, then they can escalate that to the police department to come out and actually take enforcement action.
I see. Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks.
All right. Ms. Brenner on the consent calendar.
I just had a question on number six.
All right, give me a second.
My question on that is that as city council members, because this would financially benefit local government, do we have any sort of fiduciary responsibility to our, to our organization to take a stand for something that would financially benefit our city? I'm a little concerned about us taking a stance against something that would bring additional funds into the city of Newport Beach and whether we are allowed to do that.
Well, there's a philosophical and a legal question there, so on the legal side, I'll defer to Mr. Harp. Yes, there's no legal impediment to you taking a position on proposition. Yeah, I would also point out that the council did the exact same thing on February 11th, 2014, on a resolution that was 2014-15 called a resolution of the city councils, the council, City Council of the City of Newport Beach, California, expressing support for Proposition 13 and opposition to a split role property tax apportionment. It's amazing what you could find when you go back through the records, but anyway, that, there is a long history of it. Yep. So I just wanted to, there's a lot more than that, but that, on this particular issue, I would point that out.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Mr. Avery? I have none. Do you have a motion, Mr. Avery?
I have the balance of the consent calendars items, 1 through 13, with the exceptions of items four, which was pulled by the A1 process by Mayor O'Neill for expediency, and we have no recusals, and we just have an amendment on item one, the minutes.
Okay. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Muldoon. All right, we'll go out to public comment on the consent calendar.
Mayor O'Neill, members of the City Council, my name is Jim Mosher. On item one on the consent calendar, which is-- the minutes on the second paragraph, it quotes the mayor as referring to the reproduction rate of the coronavirus in California. It abbreviates that as capital RT. The proper abbreviation for what he was talking about is a capital R followed by a little lowercase subscript T. So to prevent confusion, you might want to use the proper abbreviation. And the second thing I would point out to you, on that same page in the last paragraph under the coronavirus update, I am quoted correctly-- under the coronavirus update, I am quoted correctly as speaking about what I thought was the $80,000 contribution the city had made towards the restaurant month to help the restaurants recover. The minutes are correct, that is what I said. Preparing for tomorrow's Restaurant Association meeting, I realized I probably misspoke because I saw $40,000 on two different council agendas. I believe the correct number is 40,000, and it was approved only once, and there were not two separate ones. What I really want to talk about, though, is items five and six on your consent calendar, which are resolutions taking positions on ballot measures. We heard that the city had a position on Proposition 13. Proposition 13 is no longer a ballot measure, it is California law, part of the Constitution. Regarding measures that are actually on the ballot before voters, my understanding is that a city government can use taxpayer money to ask its staff to make an impartial analysis of how that ballot measure, if passed by the voters, will impact the city government. That is the apparatus of the city government, which I think is what Councilman Brenner was referring to, not how it will impact the lives of the residents. And they can let the public know, and perhaps should let the public know what the impact on the city government mechanism will be, so that the voters can take that into consideration when they go to the polls. But the city is not supposed to tell us what our conclusion should be when we consider that and all the other things that we may consider. And a city government is especially not supposed to use property, not supposed to use taxpayer money to order its staff to collate and publish the, all the arguments they can find on one side and one side only of a ballot measure. And that is what these two resolutions do, and I hope some of you will have the courage to vote against these, not because you think the resolution conclusion is wrong, but because you think a government should not be using taxpayer money for that purpose. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? All right, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Denise Oberman. I'd like to comment on number 11, the approval of the Beach Firings Security Professional Services Agreement. I recall that when this agreement was originally brought into being, there was a lot of controversy around the firings, involved intense interaction. I was actually involved with the community. Coastal Commission of the City, and a compromise was reached under the, also at the time, Dave Kip was the city manager. The thrust of this agreement was, at that point in time, education rather than enforcement, even though the words enforcement are in there. At this point in time, I, I would like to ask that the city revisit this agreement. Is it an appropriate agreement in terms of its intent and its scope to the reality of the physical situation that we have and the disturbance situation that we have at the firings? Furthermore, at this point in time, the firing areas are actually closed due to the pandemic. So our, our needs to have, to pay to have an organization and internal staff go and educate are quite moot, and it's anticipated they will be for this foreseeable future. What we do need, and we sorely need, it's been discussed and it will continue to be discussed, is we need more concerted and consistent enforcement, not only in the firing area, but along the beach as a whole. We have a serious perpetual disturbance problem. So what I would ask the council to consider is to remand to staff and revisit this agreement. Do we need a $320,000 a year agreement at this point in time to go out and educate people around the firings? I would suggest that we do not, and that either part or all of the funds could be more appropriately and meaningfully directed to the true issue of enforcement. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Laura Curran. I'm going to comment on three, seven, and eight. So number three is the Medi-Cal Managed Care Rate Intergovernmental Transfer Program. And I have to say, this is one of those that when you read it, you learn things. So Jeff Boiles, our fire chief, wrote about the program through Medi-Cal whereby the city can be reimbursed for services provided to CalOptima members. So the fire department provided $700,000 of services in 2019, in an 18-month period. And this caught my attention because since I live next door to the drug rehabs on Dahlia, I frequently see the fire department delivering these services, including this weekend. And the payments that were received were $126,000. So the table shows the reimbursements, and that the city actually, through its participation, gets $2 recovered for every dollar. So I want to, first of all, compliment Chief Boiles for writing a report that was descriptive, and one could understand how it works. One question is, why is there an increase in the return over the 2014 period over time? And is there a maximum in the amount that can be returned? So that is my question. But good report from Chief Boiles. On number seven, which is the dog park, the dog park has a 20% contingency for the installation of the paths, and that's $30,000. But the contingency proposal says that it will cover unforeseen conditions and potentially value engineering for trails of the dog park. So those are both great, but they're really two separate items. The sculptures that really are leading to this replacement were in unforeseen condition in the first place. My point is, you've got $30,000, you're mixing these two items, and there's no scope for anything that would happen at the dog park. So if your unforeseen conditions, take that money, and then you start work at the dog park, and you have to spend $30,000 for that and for the other, you are going to end up spending $60,000. And then the bigger question is, the park's there, we see the conditions, what are those contingencies? I'd just like to see more clarity, what potential contingencies could be. Is it materials? Is it slope, runoff? You know, let's help the public better understand the geotechnical and other environmental conditions in place. So finally, for number seven, this talks about an agreement for $16 million not to exceed for landscape maintenance of medians and roadsides with Bright View. Calls for an increase of seven personnel. Much of the work is maintenance, but also irrigation and plant work, but installing new irrigation. There are seven personnel. For this report, it's a good start, but I would never know where the roadways and medians are that are affected based on reading this report. I would suggest in future that there's a map and a discussion of the major work items and how the resources are going to be applied in that particular, particular activity. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments in the, nope, any calls? Nope. All right, we'll bring it back. Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Ms. Oberman's comment about the firings, education and enforcement program. And I did not realize, I forgot, that the firings can't even be operating. Is that true, Ms. Leung?
So we're going to pull 11 off. I know that Ms. Brenner's going to do that, so we're just going to pull 11. So we'll, we'll bring 11 as a standalone.
Oh, okay.
I'm right about that. Correct? Joy?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Please.
All right, we're going to pull 11 off. Mr. Hurdman? Pulling 11? Yeah, okay. All right. So we're going to pull 11 out of the motion. And any other discussion? All right.
I'd like, I'd like to abstain on six.
Okay. With an abstention on item number six incorporated into your motion, Mr. Avery?
Yes.
Into your second, Mr. Muldoon? Okay. All right, let's go ahead and vote.
And that includes pulling item 11.
Yes, it does.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right. Deputy Chief Birch, why don't you come on up? We're going to go to item 11 now. All right, so why don't you start with the discussion, the question that has started? So let me real quickly just correct one thing that was said, which is this is not a $320,000 a year agreement. It's a, it's a three-year contract for a maximum of 320, which is still a lot of money, but I just want to point that out for everyone. All right. There's a question about the staff report, so I'm just going to read from it because it's a fair question, which is, at the bottom of the first page, it says, "Since April 2014, the city has contracted out beach security services to provide education and enforcement related to the firing." So there's been some questions about enforcement. Could you walk us through that? And in particular, also, just, I'm going to throw in one other wrinkle into this, discuss that from the, you know, the CDP that we have with the, on the, with the Coastal Commission in terms of what, what we're, what we're required to do, and then what the security depart, or the security firm is required to do as well?
Right. So the CDP required the city to have a process in place to have the firings and the management of the firings and the uses of the firings. And within that, CDP were the security component to be an ambassador, teach, educate, and seek compliance for uses of the firings. We've got some firings that are used for, or coal use only, and some firings that are wood burning only. And there's often a lot of confusion by the public about which is which, or they can do either. It looks like a firing to everybody that comes down there, unless you're very familiar with the firings themselves, people just don't understand it. And I think largely, that's the thrust of this CDP agreement, is to try and educate people, because it's not always entirely clear which firing is to be used for what. They're painted, there's signage, for sure, but to the average, everyday visitor, I think the firings look like a firing and, and folks just use it. So that's what the security company's been doing, you know, trying to point out that this firing's intended for coal use only, these firing's are for wood burning. And typically, we get compliance at that level with the security company. Our security companies do a pretty good job, they understand the issues. We've spent a lot of time training, educating those folks about these things, and we, we do pretty good. There are times that we don't get that compliance, for sure. And when we don't, the security company will call us, and we'll go out there and sort the issue out as a police department and force it. In terms of enforcement, the security company is not authorized to enforce the municipal code. It's just outside their realm, and it is the police department's function there, and that's why we help and work in partnership with the security company to manage any enforcement issues that come up as a result of non-compliance at the different, at the different firing. So that's kind of a high-level look at what we do and what's going on with this security company. It is required by the CDP.
Okay. So we're going to go with questions from Ms. Dixon and then Ms. Brenner.
Well, okay, thank you. You know, I'm glad we're talking about this, I'm glad it was polled, because I still, maybe we all get letters from Peninsula oceanfront residents recently complaining about the firings, and I really hadn't realized that they're not allowed. I mean, I just forgot. So that's, so given that, two points on that, given that they're not supposed, no firings are supposed to be creating any fire, who is enforcing that at the present time? If it's over and beyond the services and scope of services? So I just have a general question about enforcement during COVID, how are we enforcing firings?
The police department is, along with all the beach stuff and everything else that goes on down, particularly in the Peninsula of Corona del Mar as well.
So could we, is it reasonable to expect that there would be no firings burning?
Well, I, I think with the visitorship that we've had over the summer, and I think we've seen in crazy, you know, amount of visitorship down on all our beaches over the summer because of the COVID and the pandemic, is it reasonable to expect that nobody would go down there and not use it? I don't think so. I think people see firings, and I don't think that they're really in tune with all the finer points of everything. I think we've seen a lot of challenges with COVID, not only from the community, but for, from everybody. And I would imagine that's probably one of the many challenges.
Well, have we tried, I mean, I've been down there, I guess I just didn't realize. We haven't covered them up or anything, or put any kind of little fencing around them and said, not allowed, or?
No, we, if I can just jump in real quick, because we did last week, based on the bad, the poor air quality that was happening, and AQMD advisory of the, the conditions we had, closing down temporarily. But at this point, the, the air quality conditions are good enough that it's a recommendation of Chief Boiles to allow them to be open, so we are in the process of allowing them to, to be opened up at this point.
Well, I thought COVID said that they couldn't be open. And so that was wrong, that was not correct information?
I
That's what's confusing. So are firings allowed to be open during COVID?
Yes.
Yeah, they are, they are, they were open, so when the initial COVID response was happening, we did close them at that time, but then we had since reopened them. And it was only very, very recently, right now, with the air quality.
So they were closed for that?
Yes.
And then now they're open?
Right.
So that we're not restricted from operating firings during COVID?
Correct.
Okay, so the point that Ms. Oberman was making about if they're not allowed to operate, then we shouldn't be paying for the services, because there's no reason to have them, but regardless, as I'm just hearing myself speak, they would still have to be enforced to enforce that. But, so all firings are open, it's just the enforcement, the education about this is for wood burning and this is for coal. And that's a constant challenge. So I guess that's, my third question is, we've been, this contract has been in place since 2015, 14?
I think 15, I guess.
Is it working?
In what context?
Well, I mean, is it effective in keeping people? I know there's a lot to do on the beach
Yeah.
for the police, as well as the lifeguards. Is it working for 320, whatever it is, thousand, for the next three years?
Well, I think it's required, number one. And, and number two, I, I think as a measure for, to meet that requirement, I think it's pretty effective, I think it's pretty cost-effective, as opposed to having staff specifically hired to enforce those things with the seven-days-a-week nature of the contract. So yes, I do think so.
Okay. All right, thanks.
All right, Ms. Brenner.
I had a question about, you know how frequently when people complain about something, if the police are not there to witness it, you know, we're told, well, they can't issue a citation. Can the security company witness something, and can the police file a reporter or issue a citation on the basis of that?
We can file a complaint with the DISC attorney for the municipal code violation, yes, but it would be a long process. It's not an immediate process. And so what we do, typically what our officers do when they get out there, is get compliance at that time. And we tend to have a little bit better effect at that than, say, a security company.
Right.
So that's, that's kind of where we try to go. We try to look to solve the problem at the time, and, and the path of least resistance to get that problem solved.
I know we're also having problems with people building fires on the beaches outside of the firings.
Yes.
And when you get a report about something like that, I, I've got pictures that people sent me last week from Little Corona where that was happening. Do we go down and cite those people right there on the spot? Do we?
Yeah, if we get the call and we, we're aware of it, yes, ma'am.
Do you happen to know whether there's any progress in getting that camera at Little Corona working again, because it seems to not be operational?
I know, there's been a lot of conversation. I'm not sure where that project's at.
Okay. And, and the other thing is not just on wood burning versus coal, but are they doing education about, we had a toddler who stepped on coals that were dumped into the sand not long ago, so are they doing education about that? And we've also had complaints about people dumping trash can litter into the fires just to keep it going, which is really caustic. So are they doing more education about that?
Yes, ma'am. And when, you know, we get those complaints too, and when we hear about them, we ask them to work with us on those and educate about all the different things that we see going on there. So they're very responsive in that, in that nature, or for that sort of thing, to help us manage the issues that we have down there with the firing. So yes, they're, they're responsive, and they're a pretty good partner.
Education is a big, a big issue this year, isn't it? So we appreciate what you're doing.
Yeah, it's a challenge.
And the fact that it's required for us to do this is significant. Thank you.
Mr. Hurdman.
Yeah, maybe there's a question for Grace. So can, can we consider this a mandated cost as a result of an agreement? As a result of a CDP with a of a CDP with a coastal commission? A mandated cost to our city?
I think it's appropriate to consider it in that, in that way.
Okay. With no funding from the state, from the coastal commission?
That is true.
Right, okay. And obviously, this company is working in the evenings?
Yes.
Okay. Till when?
It's four to, four to 10:00 p.m.
Okay.
So when fire rings are typically being...
When the beaches are supposed to be closed. Okay, thank you.
Okay. We'll go to members of the public. Thank you, Deputy Chief.
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, this is Jim Mosher. I'm glad that this item was pulled from the consent calendar, I think discussion is always healthy. I would raise one more point in the interest of transparency, which is those of you who read the staff report know it says the current contract with the security agency ended in April, and you're being asked tonight to approve a new contract that would begin today, which obviously raises the question, if the old contract expired in April and the new one starts today, was security being provided at the fire rings this summer by a security company? If so, what company, under what contract, and how are they being paid? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments in the community room? Any calls? All right, so... Okay. So I'm going to kick it over to Ms. Leung to answer the question from Mr. Mosher.
Yes, that's true. The contract did expire at the end of April, we were in an RFP process during this time period, but as you know, COVID hit all of us at that time, so it delayed in us coming forth, and we're obviously here now several minutes, months past that time. So during that period, we did not have a vendor doing this education enforcement, well, really the education program here, the ambassador program during this time period.
But, but to be fair, I mean, my understanding is, we, we did have lifeguards at least sort of looking at it. I mean, that wasn't their primary responsibility by any stretch, but, and, and we had PD responding when people would call.
Yes, when there's any kind of, yeah, concerns that were raised, then police would certainly respond. And also, as we noted earlier, there were time periods, particularly at the beginning, where we had the fire rings closed due to COVID and not having facilities, for, like, for example, we took that down, the volleyball poles, you know, so those kinds of activity things, so we considered fire pits as part of that at that time period. So for, there were several months where we didn't have the fire rings, you know, that were allowed to be open, they were closed during that time.
Yeah, some out of board blocks and whatnot.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Seeing that, I'm going to make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Hurdman, any further discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right. We'll go to public comments on non-agenda items. I will start in the community room. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items? Okay, we'll go to the phone line. None? All right. So we'll go into public hearings, we'll start with item number 14, Community Development Block Grant Program, year 2019, '20 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. I will say, this was a fairly comprehensive discussion in the staff report, so I'd ask, does anyone, would anyone like a staff report on this? Okay. Any discussion, any questions? All right, we'll go out to public comment on this. Do we have any public comment on item number 14? All right, seeing none in the community room, do we have any calls? No. All right. We'll bring it back. Do I have a motion?
Yeah.
Moved by Mr. Muldoon, do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Duffield, any discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right, we'll move into item number 15, ordinances, you know what, I'll let you read the title later. We'll move into the discussion about the Newport Airport Village Plan Community Development Project. I would ask for a brief staff discussion on this, very brief, basically explaining why, why this item's up and what the effect would be.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, Jim Campbell, Deputy Director for Community Development, this is the third time that you will have been seeing this project. This is the Newport Airport Village Plan Community. It is a general plan amendment, it is a zone change, the adoption of new command, planned community development standards for the future development of up to 444 residential units. It's up in the airport area, right across the street from the airport. So the action's before you this evening, well, we've got several of them. The first one is to override the Airport Land Use Commission's determination that it's inconsistent with the airport Environs land use plan. You, you adopted a resolution in July, noticing them of your intent to do so. The second item on the agenda for your adoption is the general plan amendment itself, which would change the general plan from airport office to mixed-use horizontal for the development of the planned community text. And there's two ordinances, one for that zone change that I mentioned with the adoption of the planned community text, and then the last one is for a development agreement with the developer. I can get into more details if you, if you need it, and the applicant is in the, the community room for, might answer any questions as well.
I had one question, then Ms. Brenner has a question. So one of the, one of the points that came up when we were first addressing this issue was the height issue. If I'm reading this correctly, the FAA, the, the applicant had gone back to the FAA for determination, and the FAA issued a determination of no hazard to air navigation. Does that mean that they were able to resolve the height issue that we had been concerned about the last time we brought this up?
Yes, it is. There, there was an earlier determination for 80-foot buildings, and that was incorrect. They went back to the FAA for a height of 85 feet, and the FAA did make that determination, so the planned community text is consistent with the FAA's determination of, of no threat to air navigation.
Okay. I, I do recall that being a, a particular concern of the council when we were addressing this, I wanted to make sure that it happened. All right, Ms. Brenner.
Jim, my concern last time was that I didn't feel comfortable with our affordable housing numbers, and it's a, it's a bigger question than obviously just this project, but can we get there through, like, 4,834 units that we have to build in Newport Beach, at the formula that we have, the number of affordable housing units in this project, are we going to be able to get to our number of affordable housing units by the time we get to 4,834 units?
Councilmember, that's a great question. That also assumes that you might have to only be providing future units through projects like this. There are a variety of strategies that we're looking at with the help of the Housing Element Update Advisory Committee, accessory dwelling units, we have some existing projects that are already entitled that are going to help us with this. So I think the gap is going to be a little smaller than 4,800 units, but you are, you are correct to point out that there's a lot of that's going to be affordable. And I think as we go forward with our housing element development, the new policies, we'll have to revisit how much affordable housing are we going to be requiring of these future projects going forward. And so we're holding this project really to the current standards, not to the future standards. We don't know what those policies will be, those will be coming forward through the process during 2021, and you'll see them toward the, the late summer of 2021.
I'm worried about us getting to the end and needing all affordable housing units, because we haven't met enough need along the way.
One item I want to point out is that the RENA, the 4,834 units, is really a planning goal, so what we're doing is planning for those units at, at a fairly, a sizable amount of that would be affordable or below market rate. The city isn't obligated to develop that, so with, again, we're just planning for it.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. Muldoon.
Well, thank you. Mr. Campbell, just wanted to briefly discuss those RENA numbers, again, people will tune in, it's, used to be the most controversial issue in the city before coronavirus showed up. The RENA numbers that the governor mandated and that were applied or given by SCAG, those numbers are, you said, part of the planning element?
It's part of the housing element, so there, there's a process every eight years where the state and SCAG develop an allocation for all the cities. So this, the statewide allocation for the Southern California region, for that SCAG oversees, is 1.3 million units. And then SCAG takes that number and then apportions it to all the jurisdictions, a whole 197, I believe it is, and our number happens to be 4,834 units. At your future agenda on October 13th, we'll be bringing back an appeal of that number, as well as an update on the housing element to kind of go over kind of where we are, we'll provide a, a feedback for you, Ms. Brenner, and to you, Mr. Muldoon.
Great. And just to tie it in, COVID has basically put some of our products on hold, but one of them that I had suggested, and I believe it's been looking into, is garnishing more units from ADUs and perhaps waiving any penalties for them, any that have been not, been not permitted prior. Can you estimate how many of these low housing units could be satisfied by existing ADUs?
Right now, we're working with HCD, which is State Department of Housing, Community Development, and SCAG to try to develop a, a, a percentage of the ADUs that we might anticipate or plan for going forward that might be eligible to be low or very low income units. I'm not sure what that percentage is going to be right now. Obviously, if they're built and if the owner represents to us that they're going to be renting out rent-free, we may be able to make the assumption that it's available for low-income households and then take credit for that. The amount of the, the planning for future ADUs is going to be a, a topic of discussion at the, the Housing Element Update Committee. You know, there are, right now, we don't allow them, we allow them on very limited circumstances, I think we've done them in the last couple of years when they're allowable now under state mandate, we've, we've issued approximately a dozen or maybe slightly more. And our future planning goals are kind of a, a result of past production. Now, I think if we, we may develop policies with the Housing Element Update, again, that might try to promote these more aggressively, and then we might be able to take credit for them, you know, in the low or moderate income categories, and we'll try to do so. The question is, how many can we really anticipate over the next planning cycle, which would be eight years? So it, it might be several hundred, it might be as many as a thousand, we just don't know. We don't want to overestimate and then fall short, because we'll actually have to then find those units elsewhere in, in our community. So it's a very delicate balance there, and so that's going to be discussed at the Housing Element Update Committee in future meetings. It'll be going through a public vetting and a public discourse through, through outreach efforts and a variety of, of future virtual town hall meetings, if you like. And then it'll be coming forward through the process, we'll provide council updates as well as, eventually we'll have a draft update for everyone to review and, and comment on, and it'll go through a process through the planning commission and up to you folks for adoption. The, the target is to have this all finished up by October of 2021, it's a tall order, but we're, we're working on it right now.
I, thank you. And I think you've done an excellent job on this project. What I like to say is, the financing for low and very low-income housing has, has changed, it becomes to the point where it's hard to make a project even pencil if you don't have a certain blend of basically fair market housing. We are given this assignment from the governor and from the local SCAGs, and we've, we've got to give it our call as try, but they're not here making, to make sure our budgets actually make sense. So we have a little bit of a decision, we can keep allowing these units to be built in a great area, and they can put some affordable in there, but we can let them do their model and we can then accept the money they generously give to us, or we can squeeze them for units that, quite frankly, we might never be able to hit, and a disingenuous Sacramento hopes that we hit them, and not receive the kind of funding that allows to have the best service as possible. So personally, when I see the trade-off, I, I thank the developers for their generosity in these development agreements, and I'd rather focus on providing housing in general, letting the free market decide the price, and accepting development fees that allow us to function as a great city, than to issue a mandate on the developers. Now, there will be a time, I imagine, where financing will change, and there'll be a restructuring, and low and very low-income housing will be a lot easier to build, will make more sense for developers, and then we can take perhaps more if we like, although I would argue, we're still not going to be rewarded by Sacramento for doing so. So I think at the end of the day, we have to look at, at, at the current bottom line and the reality of the builders, and, and, and work with them to help them get their projects approved, rather than, than to worry about applying the sky number that Sacramento gives us for, for housing that we and most jurisdictions will not be able to meet. Thank you.
Mr. Avery.
So we're basically setting it up so the, so the market can, can build, is that right, with the zoning for this?
That is correct. What's, what's before the council tonight is just the legislative actions, the general plan amendment and the zone change, the zoning regulations, so that a future builder can come in and build a project that will have market rate units, but it will also include at least 5% of 329 units as, as affordable. Now, there, there are circumstances where they can build more than that, up to 444, but that would include additional affordable units. But again, this is just setting up the, the policy framework and the regulatory framework to allow that construction to happen in the future.
And, so, just to be clear, so will ADUs count, or we don't know if ADUs will count toward the total?
Now, now we're back to the housing element and our future policies to achieve the RENA, yes, ADUs will count.
Right, and they are being built now.
Yes, several of them are being built at, at a fairly low production rate at this point in time. I, I think as we go forward, we might choose to promote them in a much larger way, and we might up the production, and that might support us using or identifying a much larger number, which then would help us meet our RENA goals. And so that's, again, part of the Housing Element Update that we're debating currently.
I mean, the larger picture is, you know, I think most residents, and me personally, I don't like any of it, but it's just our reality. And the, this Airport Village project, I, I think the development is, is good, but in another time, I wouldn't think it would be good. But it's what we, we need to do to start getting closer to just a start, we have to start, and so I think this is an important start, just start moving in that direction. We can't run up to the deadline and be short on, on, on this, and short on our plan, and frankly, short on providing housing all the way along up to it, because that, the deadline is not about providing the housing, it's about getting the zoning all figured out, right?
It's really the deadline of, it's October of 2021, we need to provide HCD a draft housing element that meets those goals or contains those policies, identifies sites that we will consider housing for, or we'll have to commit to a rezone program within the first three years where we're actually going forward and making that happen. And so, yes, this is a project that, in essence, is slightly in advance of that, that future housing element. But again, this site will count towards, the housing that we would authorize tonight would count towards satisfying the RENA that we see coming down the road.
And there's more in the pipeline?
This is the largest project in the pipeline, we have one other project that's a similar size, it's called the Residence at 4,400 Von Karman, it used to be on, it's on the Coal Center Newport property, Precern is the developer on that, and we're working with them right now.
And these are all trending toward five-story apartment blocks?
For the most part, they are. 85 feet for this project, the Precern project is, is in that same height range, it, it may be six or seven stories, but you know, it's not 10 or 12, it's not 150-foot high building, it's much lower than that.
And is there a reason why it's sort of, is that a sweet spot?
Well, a lot of it has to do with the type of construction. As soon as you get into one much taller building, the construction costs go through the roof, and so there's kind of a sweet spot there for the, keeping the construction costs down.
Right, great, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dixon.
What are we going to do if, because obviously the airport area is targeted for more residential housing, whether it's affordable or not, and we're going to be running into this ALUC issue, and are we going to continue to disregard their disapproval of our building so close to the airport? How are we going to deal with this? It's just, I think it's disrespectful, we just kind of ignore it, but I mean, that's our job, is to look at burdens placed on, against the airport, and we've just been working with the airport, it kind of puts us in an awkward position to disregard their concerns, but apparently we are, because housing is a greater priority than, I guess, safety, I don't know. What are we going to do about ALUC and the airport area for residential housing going forward?
That's a really good question. You know, projects that require a general plan amendment or a zone change will have to go to, to them for review, and so when we look forward to increasing the, the housing possibilities in the airport area to satisfy RENA, you know, that amendment would have to go to them for review. I wouldn't say that we're going to ignore what they're saying, you know, at the end of the day, if it's consistent with their land use plan, even though they say it isn't, you know, it's within this council's prerogative to override that, to kind of help satisfy and meet our housing goals. So we'll, we'll dutifully consider it, you know, even with the override here, we don't, there is no safety issue that, in our minds, that we're creating as a result of this project. I, I think the, the comments from Airport Land Use Commission are really centered around, you know, those future residents are going to have noise, they believe it to be incompatible, and you've taken that input through this process and you're... and you've taken that input through this process in your deliberations here this evening. So again, we're not disregarding anything that they've said.
Well, the Pilot Association have written to us, too.
Yes, the Pilot Association gave us a letter this afternoon, you know, indicating their displeasure with the project, and I guess they would like to see a different outcome than recommended. Again, that's for you to consider in your deliberations this evening.
One other question on another subject I brought up the last meeting on this, and the In Lou Park fees that were determined for this project under the development agreement, and it was based on assessing the equivalent park area at 2007 market value. Are we looking, not retroactively to this project, but going forward, let's get our market value rates up to snuff because we're about 13 years behind?
Councilmember Dixon, that's a great question. We are identifying, I believe it is, it's in November, we're going to be bringing back to the City Council a review of that and a possible update. So we have conducted those appraisals, and so we're bringing it back for an update on that fee in November.
Because that costs the city money, by not having those current figures on this particular project, but I'm not suggesting we rework that, it's just that it costs the city money. So I just wanted to go on record of that. All right, I know you guys have been busy, but got to keep those things up to date. All right, thank you very much.
Ms. Brenner.
I need to reveal an ex parte communication. I did meet with Ken Percern and several members of his staff at the project where it's going to be the residences at 4,400 Von Karman, but in the course of our conversation, he mentioned to me that they are a likely bidder on this project, and so they may possibly be the one who actually does the development on this project. So I wanted to just get that into the record. And also that I talked with him extensively about affordable housing, and his family has, for generations, been building projects that have affordable housing components in them, and he assures me that they make money on their projects, and so it's part of their business plan to build the affordable housing units into it, and he and his people are really experts at this, and when I talk with them, I feel reassured that we can do quality projects in Newport Beach that also meet our requirements for, and a lot of this is workforce housing, and a lot of it is housing for our children and our grandchildren that can't afford places on the beach, and so it's not affordable housing necessarily for indigent people, it's people that are part of our community but need entry-level housing and workforce housing to be able to live close to their jobs. So it's encouraging when you talk to those people who have a great deal of expertise in the affordable housing field, but I wanted to mention that he is a possible bidder on this project, so I wanted to make sure I got that in the record.
Mr. Avery.
So over time, just to revisit, ADUs could be a significant part of this if they're counted.
ADUs as part of the Housing Element Update, yes. Within this project, we're really not factoring ADUs in this project.
Right, right, no, not this project, just from a...
There will be a component of our housing strategy that will include ADUs. We'll have to estimate how many ADUs we might be able to, the community might come forward with over the next planning cycle, again, the next eight years.
Yeah, that would be good.
We don't have a good handle on precisely what that number is yet, but you know, several hundred, maybe as many as a thousand, but again, it's going to be a subject of discussions with the consultants and with the committee and with the community.
I know there's still a lot of, not confusion, but just not really understanding what ADUs are and the fact that you can actually have two of them in one single-family home, right? One outside and one in the home.
Yes, you can. On any residential unit, you can have an accessory dwelling unit as well as a junior accessory dwelling unit, and then they're currently allowed in any residential property.
Three separate units on an R1 lot.
Yes, you can do that right now.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Two quick things, and then we'll go out to the public. The first one was for Mr. Avery, when he first started talking about ADUs, I think I may have been caught laughing a little bit when he had asked, well, can we count ADUs only because, it's like banging your head against a wall a little bit on that question, only because, you know, we actually tried really hard to get legislation in on that exact question, and it died in committee. And then, you know, HCD is working through their guidelines, and they haven't published them yet, but ADUs will be a part of it, and I really do hope they will revise them to allow for a lot more use on that front. Yeah, but specific to this project, I want to just come back real quick and note, I think that when municipality has provided the legislative authority to override a decision that comes from the Airport Land Use Commission, that we recognize that the two agencies can certainly see things differently, and that there has been a legislative determination that, at the end of the day, one agency gets to decide the answer to the question. And so there's certainly no ignoring the ALUC's decision by any stretch. I mean, this is a 312-page staff report that we're looking at right now, it's the third time we've been looking at it. And so I would just suggest that it's perfectly reasonable that there are two bodies that can see things differently from a policy standpoint, given all the facts in front of them, and just because one disagrees with another doesn't mean that there's any disrespect shown, it just simply means that there's a determination made differently, and as we know regularly, this council probably disagrees often with things that are made by bodies that have more legislative authority than we do, but doesn't mean that they disrespect us, they just have a different policy goal at the end of the day. So I just want to point that out. I think as we go forward, if we end up with another project like this, we'll do the exact same thing, which is take their recommendation seriously and evaluate each project on its merits. So with that, we'll go out to members of the public. So we'll start with the community room. Do we have any public comments on this item in the community room?
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. As Mr. Campbell said, the representatives for the applicant are here, so I'm a little surprised they're not jumping up to tell you why to approve the project. They're probably going to rebut what I say, but I'm going to offer you three reasons why you should vote no on this. First reason is that approving this is going to lower the value of this property to the city by $620,000 per year, according to the fiscal impact analysis that was in the earlier report. Staff has kind of glossed over this loss in perpetuity of $620,000 a year, saying that that was already considered in the 2006 general plan. However, the 2006 general plan never contemplated that this particular property could be lowered in value by that amount, and that's what you're doing. The second issue is the untimeliness of this, as has been discussed, not knowing what the city's solution is going to be for our affordable housing crisis. Your approval of this through the development agreement is locking down this property owner with no obligation to provide any low or very low-income housing. They can provide 10%, they can provide 5%, they do not have to. We're hoping maybe ADUs will help with this. If they do not, and you were to allow other developers to provide housing in the same form with affordable housing being a small component, very small as it is here, we would have to plan not for 4,800 units, but as I showed in my written comment, 49,000 units to provide enough affordable housing to meet our quota, and it's actually worse than that because providing that small component of affordable housing qualifies them for bonus units. So it's even more than that. We would have to add more housing than we have in the entire city currently. And the third reason is the incompatibility that the Airport Land Use Commission pointed out. You may or may not agree with them, but I think they're correct that this housing development across the street from the airport is going to generate more complaints about airport noise. That's good for the city in the sense that it will restrain perhaps airport growth, but it's bad in the sense that the complaints are not going to be about the jets, the complaints are going to be about the noise from the small propeller planes, which we just said that we are trying to protect. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments in the, all right?
Good evening, council. My name is Patrick Strater with Starpoint Ventures here on behalf of the property owner, John Saunders. Mr. Mosher was correct, we were not intending to speak other than to thank staff for their hard work in preparing the staff report and all their diligence in bringing this project to you this evening. As we mentioned last time, it's been a long road to get here. It started before 2006, it went through the 2014 citywide general plan amendment, and we filed after Measure Y failed the next day, and here we are in 2021, 2020, about to embark on the process to get us to a site development review, which will then, you know, take us to an actual project. So I just wanted to speak to the three items that Mr. Mosher brought up. Item number one, on the lower property values, the fiscal impact analysis was conducted without any regard to the development agreement, the public benefit fees, the contributions that were being made in the development agreement. I've done a lot of fiscal impact reports on a lot of projects that I've worked on, and it basically just takes a presumed call for services from residents, and it builds it into a formula that spits out a presumed property tax amount, and residential will always spit out a lower value than commercial and retail. So you guys have been talking about big-picture policy issues going forward on the RENA requirements. This lower property value is not specific to this property. As staff mentioned, it was studied in '06 and in '14, and it will be the same on any conversion from a commercial property to a residential property. On items two and three, if you look at your staff report on page 15, 102, items number nine and 10, item number nine, Mr. Mosher was incorrect, there is a minimum of 5% of affordable housing on this project, and we anticipate, as Councilwoman Brenner spoke to, that the developers will, in fact, do more than the minimum of 5%, but there is an obligation, in fact, to provide affordable housing. And then in number 10, speaking to the Airport Land Use issue of noise, there are noise requirements on item 10 on that same page. So I think we've sufficiently dealt with all of the issues that have been presented. We very much appreciate you taking the time to look at this project. We are very happy to be here, finally, after this many years, moving forward, we hope on what will be an incredible provision of much-needed housing in the airport area. So if you have any specific questions I'm here and able to answer, Sean Matzler, our attorney from Cox Castle, who worked extremely hard on preparing the IR in front of you, is also here. So with that, we urge your support of this project, and we're here and appreciate all your work. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment in the community room? Okay, we'll go to the phone. Hi, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Nancy Scarborough. I've spoken on this in previous council meetings, just want to go over this one more time. This project's being considered for 5% very low income, that's 16 units, and 10% low income, that's 33 units. This is out of 444 units. That's a total of 49 units out of our required 2,400 low and very low units. To put that in perspective, at those percentage rates, we would have to build 30,000 units to satisfy the very low-income unit, and we need to build another 10,000 units to satisfy our requirement for low-income unit. That's 40,000 additional homes in our city, have about 35 to 40 units now, and that doesn't even take into consideration the additional moderate and above moderate homes, which would be another at least 2,500 homes. The airport area is one of the few areas that residents have agreed is one that would be acceptable for low-income housing in all of the general plan update meetings that were left beginning of the year before COVID. People were stacking Legos up in the airport was one area that people were considering. The Housing Advisory Update Committee has already reviewed this, or in the process of reviewing this, and they are finding that this is one of very few properties in the area that is viable. They're not having much luck finding anything else. I have to agree with Mr. Mosher on this. I think the decision for this project should be evaluated by the Housing Element Update Advisory Committee in conjunction with the development of the general plan and the housing element. Why are we making this big decision in advance of having a new general plan and a new housing element, and why does this decision need to be made today? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other calls? All right, now we'll bring it back. Mr. Muldoon.
I'll move the, I'll move the staff recommendation.
Seconded by Mr. Duffield. Any further discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I will read the ordinance titles for ordinance number 2020-22, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach, approving zoning code amendment number CA 2014-009, and plan, community development plan number PC 2020-002, establishing the Newport Airport Village Plan, community development plan located at 4341, 4361, and 4501, Birch Street, 4320, 4340, 4360, 4400, 4500, 4520, 4540, 4570, 4600, and 4630, Campus Drive, and 4525, 4533, and 4646, MacArthur Boulevard. Those addresses are also in ordinance number 2020-23, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach, approving development agreement DA 2014-003 for the Newport Airport Village Plan, community development for the properties located, as I mentioned previously, and the motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Thank you. We'll move into item number 16, which I've got my fingers crossed that we can finally talk about short-term lodging for less than two hours. So I'm going to suggest that this is probably not something we need staff report on. Yeah, okay. Any discussion before we go to public comment? All right, we'll go to public comment on item number 16 first in the community room.
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, this item, which you didn't explain very clearly, I believe, is about increasing the fees for the short-term lodging permits. One of the reasons for increasing the fees is cover the cost of the 24-hour hotline answering service that we are supposed to be implementing. I have not been able to find the contract for that service on the city website, so I'm hoping somebody can clarify whether that service is in place and whether we actually know how much it costs so that we actually have a basis for these fee increases. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments in the community room on this item?
Denise Oberman, thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. I don't think the increase is going to be enough. I think the staff knows that, too, and that's assuming that the city is serious about responding to calls and complaints and actually following through to make sure there's adequate enforcement so the people, the community can have peace and quiet. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment in the community room? All right, do we have any calls on this one? No? All right, we'll bring it back. Any discussion or a motion?
I'll move staff report.
All right, moved by Mr. Hurdman, seconded by Ms. Dixon. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Oh, it passed one to zero, that's pretty good.
My apologies, one moment.
All right, let's vote again.
It's the most important vote.
Pretty sure it violates all charter, but whatever.
Okay, with Councilmember Muldoon voting no, the motion carries 6-1.
Got to find some humor. All right, we'll go to item number 17.
Prior...
Oh, go ahead.
I just need to recuse myself on this item due to real property interests.
Okay, just wait a second. All right. Oh, sorry, just a second. That's okay. Okay, this is probably the item that members of the public have been waiting for, so I want to make sure I'm abundantly clear that this is the item discussing the Newport Beach Municipal Code pertaining -- or I'm sorry, the amendment to the Municipal Code pertaining to the oceanfront boardwalk safety program. To be clear, it's also the item where we would be discussing providing staff with further direction regarding implementation of a prohibition or motorized -- of motorized or other transportation devices, including electric bicycles on the oceanfront boardwalks. So there are two issues here. There's the amendment, and there's a proposed amendment, and then there's also a staff direction. So with that, boy, there's a lot going on. Why don't we do a very, very brief staff report, just kind of explaining what the proposed modifications would be and what you're looking for from us in terms of a further recommendation? They have a -- they have -- oh, you have a presentation? All right, go ahead. All right, go ahead. Go ahead.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city councils. Dave Mench and Brad Summers, a principal civil engineer within the Public Works Department. Knowing it's been a bit of a long evening, I'll go ahead and shorten this up a bit. The staff report was written very detailed and covers a lot of these items, so please let me know if you have any questions as we go along. This really is a follow-up to a February 11 study session. I know for me, it seems like a lifetime ago. During that meeting, we did talk about the oceanfront boardwalk and the regulations relating to it. There was a great turnout from the community and quite a bit of public comment giving us some guidance. And then from that, the council, you provided guidance to staff on three key areas, the first of which was to review fines and consider an increase for violations of the municipal code. The second was to consider additional engineering items to discourage poor user behavior, and the third, to consider a ban of motorized transportation devices. Now, I think where most of us are familiar with the oceanfront boardwalk, so I'll go quick here. As we talk about this, it is for the entire length of boardwalk from 36th Street down to East Street. And really, we've continued to hear that longstanding concern of speeding and unsafe behavior, and then the recent proliferation of these electronic devices and transportation has really led us, or up the conversation, I should say. Chapter 1254, also called the Oceanfront Boardwalk Safety Program, governs the oceanfront, defines the users as well as the oceanfront itself, establishes items like the eight-mile-per-hour speed limit and rules of the road, prohibits motorized scooters and unsafe operation, provides authority to the city traffic engineer to enact special regulations as well as posting signs related to those regulations, and establishes the penalties related to the violations of this section. There are other locations within the California Vehicle Code, as well as our municipal code, related to the oceanfront and the governance of that. The two here we'll point out are Section 1256040, related to prohibition of Suri cycles and pedicabs, as well as 1257020, related to the prohibition of skateboards. Now, with the guidance provided to staff in February, the city attorney's office staff, along with the public works staff, reviewed the Chapter 1254 related to the oceanfront boardwalk safety program again. And really, we found two areas which we wish to provide some revisions for your consideration this evening. The first is related to the definitions, and looking at that, the definitions currently within this section are really related to those traditional users of the boardwalks, pedal-powered bicycles, pedestrians, skateboarders, excuse me, skaters and such. With that, we'd like to add other items such as electric bicycles, motorized boards or hoverboards, as well as motorized transportation devices. And then with throughout the other sections within this, these definitions will help our enforcement arm, of course, cite for violations related to these items. Also, looking at the increased fines related to speed limit, motorized scooters, rules of the road, and other restrictions as posted, we are considering increasing the fine from $50 to $200. That is a maximum fine. There is one other section in here that actually has its own subsection, which is the unsafe operation, and that we're not considering a change for, requesting a change for at this time, simply because it actually carries a higher penalty. Unsafe operation can be considered a misdemeanor and carries a fine of up to $500. So we wouldn't recommend a change in that at this point. In talking about engineering solutions, again, this is detailed pretty extensively within the staff report. We do have a robust sign program. If you travel the oceanfront from end to end and back, you'll pass over 100 signs that have a fairly clear and concise messaging about what you can and can't do, and also provide some guidance related to how you should operate on the oceanfront. There's also painted stencils along the path. I think I counted about seven per block, so there's quite a bit of information there, too, how fast to go or not go and such. With this early this summer and hearing some concerns about the signs, we did go out, both Public Works and Municipal Operations, we replaced some of our faded signs and some missing signs. I think we found about 19, so a small number. And then moving forward, we're looking at, potentially looking at our restriction sign. That's the sign that looks a bit like a no parking sign there, and details out the regulations very clearly. But maybe something a little more eye-catching, looking at using these symbols, such as those on the bottom, which depict a no Suri cab, no skateboarding, and no smoking. We've redeployed our radar speed feedback signs. As you may recall, these went out about two years ago. We did have a bit of an issue with some of the softwares and limitations of the signs, which we feel we fixed. They've been back out for about two months now. We have not heard any negative comments about them. Now, the way we operate these, they provide feedback to cyclists. We often heard they -- people were just unaware of how fast they were going, and they couldn't relate that to the required eight miles per hour or less. We have six locations along the peninsula that we can put these so we can cover the entire length of peninsula. We go out about every two weeks, change the batteries, clean them up, make sure they're working, and then we'll move into different locations. A more challenging area for us has been finding a speed calming or a traffic calming device. When we talk about these, we're really talking about something that could be placed that would actually slow a cyclist down or slow a fast-moving person down. You know, we often think of things in the vehicle world like a speed bump. And during our research, we really realized there's nothing off-the-shelf meant for a multi-use trail. There's no standard devices. So in our quest, we actually started looking at vehicle devices, again, such as speed bumps, to see if we could apply them to the oceanfront. Talking about speed bumps, because again, we know that's something that's very obvious to most people. In our research and looking at these and riding them and checking them out, such as the picture depicted on the bottom left here, we realized it wasn't a good fit for the oceanfront. And essentially, for a speed bump to be effective slowing bicyclists, it would have to be too abrupt to maybe work well for the other users on the trail, such as the -- actually, my daughter riding her scooter on the bottom right here.
I wonder who that was.
Had to do it. And those that are maybe walking. But to counter that, it would have to be too gradual to even slow the cyclist down. So really, we've dismissed speed bumps for use on the oceanfront at this point. But during our research, we did find what we were calling rumble bumps or rumble strips. It's another item that we're adapting from the vehicle world. It's what you can see, again, the scooter, my daughter riding over here as we were testing it out. It kind of showed some potential to provide a good feedback and awareness to the cyclist without observing any potential issues for our other users. With that in mind, we have deployed this. It was last Thursday. These went down on the Castaways Trail, which we were hearing similar concerns about speeding cyclists. And since then, we've already received a couple positive comments about it, which is great. What it is, as you can see, it's kind of like a thick stripe, so to speak, but it does have a bit of a profile that, again, will provide that visual and tactile sort of feeling for the cyclist as they go over it and potentially not have an issue for other users of the trail. Now, we have three locations along Castaway if you wish to go out and check them out. We're planning to hold this trial for a couple months, and that will give time for the community to kind of digest it and get back to us with comments, as well as for staff to determine the effectiveness of it. If the results continue to be favorable, then this could be something we can consider for the oceanfront in the future. We do have our oceanfront boardwalk improvement project. This was slated for this current fiscal year but deferred to the next fiscal year due to the concerns of budget shortfall related to the coronavirus crisis. Prior to being deferred, the city had actually moved through the RFP process and selected a consultant and was ready to bring it to the city council for consideration, and we are ready to move forward with this should the funding come available. And just to recap for this, this was to bring the ideas to the community, get their input on the larger-scale ideas related to the oceanfront, things like a second trail, a wider path, how could we get it through the oceanfront parking lot. These are big ideas, and we really want to make sure the community was part of that, and that was wrapped up in this, in this project. Recently, in the past couple days, we have had more discussions about Suri cycles. For those who are not familiar with Suri, it's that larger four-wheeled bicycle, generally two, four, or six seats. They have actually been banned on the oceanfront, as well as other sidewalks and piers areas since 1995. And then in reading the ordinance, it's pretty interesting that there actually is a requirement on the vendors, as well as the rental operators, to inform users of these regulations in riding, as well as to place a placard showing them where they can and cannot ride, including the oceanfront, in plain sight along that Suri cab. So this is already in place, and it's something we'll be looking further into. As we've been talking about quite a few stuff, coming back to the recommendations for you tonight, first again is to amend the Municipal Code, Chapter 1254, to add definitions for new and emerging motorized conveyances, including electric bicycles, and to increase fines for oceanfront violations. And then the second item is really a draw from our February meeting where we heard quite a bit of public input, and we really realized the community was fairly split on the idea of banning or further restricting electric conveyances on the oceanfront. And with that, we're requesting a forum and further guidance related to the ban or further restrictions of electric conveyances on the oceanfront. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, before we go to public comment, any questions or comments? Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. Mr. Summers, can you step back up? Just needs a again drink of water, sorry. Take your time, by the way. Could you bring the picture again of the bicyclists and the cutest girl in the world, your daughter, obviously?
One of two in my world, yes.
Yes. So can you explain, you said you made a determination based on different bumps required for different riding vehicles. Can you explain your thinking again to why you can't choose one?
Well, when we were looking at speed bumps, we -- the gentleman depicted there is actually one of our senior civil engineers, who was nice enough to ride around the city with me and try out different things. We really feel that speed bumps, again, to work on the oceanfront, they'd have to be short in length and tall in height, which would create a very abrupt bump. And that would be to more or less cause the cyclist to slow down before going over it. But we are concerned that that may create issues for other users, the small-wheeled vehicles like the scooter, our hikers, joggers, runners that are also on the multi-use trails. To counter that, as we'd said, it would have to become very long and gradual, and with that, it just wouldn't have any effect slowing cyclists, at least from our observations and experience.
Have you seen those sort of squared-off speed bumps? They are long and gradual?
Yes.
But they have like an edge on them, so they don't have to worry about a scooter or another item not having trouble with it, but it probably, I imagine, will work on a bike. Do you consider those?
You know, we haven't had a chance to ride or try that out. It is something we can look into.
Okay, great. Fun project, where is the cyclist picture taken? I'm just curious.
That's actually, I think, in the Sail House community.
Okay.
Right above, I believe it is, or right by Goldenrod Elementary.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Dixon, excuse me.
Thank you, Mayor. Brad, if you'd stay up there, I have a couple questions. So if you would please go to, I think, slide seven of your presentation. I just have a couple questions. So--
Which slide was that? I'm sorry.
Just where you were, just with those, yeah, okay. Can you opine on how we can have over 100 regulatory signs and we have the problems that we do? So as a traffic engineer specialist, are signs effective? Any, even the illustrative or the graphic type of signs? I mean, why do we have signs? Nobody pays attention to them.
Yeah, and it surely seems that way more and more these days. Well, that's, there's a lot of schools on thought on that. I know we are required to have certain signs, such as these regulatory signs, and that will allow us to enforce the rules. I do have another slide showing more signs, if you wouldn't mind me--
All right.
Okay. So our sign program, this is actually a sample of the signs that you would pass. We have the regulatory signs on the far right, your eight miles per hour, as well as your regulation sign. We post those on every other street light, which is about every other street end on the peninsula. And then in between, we have these more creative and eye-catching signs. And this plan was actually developed around 2009 by the Past Oceanfront Boardwalk Safety Committee as a way to try and, one, ensure that we had the regulatory signs in place so we could enforce, but, two, create something that may be a little more eye-catching to hopefully draw attention to it. But getting back to your original question, unfortunately, I think people maybe have gone blind to signs in a way.
Yeah, I mean, I know, I agree. I guess there's a legal reason to have the signs, but they're totally ineffective. Because, I mean, that's why we're going to be discussing later on enforcement. On your slide number eight, the radar feedback, you say increases awareness of speed. Signs now, the new signs, I guess, now shuts off at preset speed. So explain that if, because we know we had the problem where the bike riders would want to see how fast they could get the speed to show. So where does it shut off? At eight miles per hour? And so they're still going to whiz past at a greater speed?
For the first deployment, or how we have them set now, we actually set them to where they show a solid speed limit up to eight miles and up to 10 miles per hour, excuse me. Just to give the cyclist a little more information, from 10 to 15, they'll flash and blink, but beyond there, they'll actually go dark, so it'll actually shut off.
So you know better than, you know better than I, but then they go, oh, we beat the system. We can go as fast as we want. I mean, I just, I commend you for trying. I think that the cyclist will find a way. They'll just, they'll just exceed the speed. I think they just, as Mr. Hurdman just said, just blow it off. I mean, we are trying, and I'll say this later on in my comments, we've tried so many ways to solve this problem, and we keep running into dead ends. In your research with other cities and their bike paths, like Santa Monica, Manhattan Beach, et cetera, or Huntington Beach, how do they regulate speeding electric bikes? Because they're coming down from LA and they're all over. So how are they? I know they have dual paths, but how do they rate, do they regulate speed on those dual paths?
You know, unfortunately, I'm not quite sure how they are doing that or how successful they've been. I know their big step was to split the paths or create wider paths, which we've heard some concern about that as well. But unfortunately, I don't know how successful they've been at regulating speeds.
We don't know, just in terms of traffic engineer, bike paths, reading? We don't know what other cities are doing?
Unfortunately, I don't know what they've been doing in that.
And so just to remind everybody, currently, Suris are prohibited in the municipal codes. And we're not talking about Suris. As I mentioned earlier, I'll be coming back to a future meeting, and we could talk about what we need to do further with Suris. Skateboards, now they're motorized, but regular skateboards, are they permitted on the boardwalk?
No, they're not. They have been banned as well through another code.
I mean, you see hundreds of them. I mean, it's kind of, it's really kind of embarrassing. As a city, we have all these signs, we have all these rules, and people know that it's, they're not going to be enforced. And then the segways, do we still see the segways? Are they still around? I heard the company went out of business, or one of the retail stores had pulled them away. What do you know about segways? I know they're ADA protected. I know we can't legislate them out, but are they still out there?
You know, from my observations, we just don't see many.
Right.
Every once in a while, you may see one that somebody owns themselves, but I really have seen a drop-off, say, in the tours that we were experiencing some heartburn over earlier.
Okay. And then just to clarify, what we are doing this evening is, on the definitional front, is because electric bikes were not even considered when we were talking about motorized scooters, we're broadening the definition so that whatever we decide to do, it will be included in the definition of the regulation. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Avery.
So you've been out there max times when Saturday afternoon, Sunday, summertime. Has it ever occurred to you that the pipe is sort of running at capacity?
Yeah, it is very congested at times.
And so you mentioned, what municipality has widened the boardwalk? And so you mentioned, what municipality has widened the boardwalk? Their boardwalk, has somebody done that?
Yeah, well, we do see wider boardwalks up in LA County. And then we've seen some split trails up around like Santa Monica and Long Beach.
Right. And the wider walks, do they have prescribed area for wheeled?
Some do, but generally, thinking maybe towards more Venice, I believe it's just open and maybe split side by side.
Right. And do you have any thoughts as to whether the Coastal Commission would oppose a wider sidewalk?
We haven't, we haven't gone there yet.
Right.
But the Coastal Commission and our CDP, of course, is a consideration as we move forward.
But it just seems to me, peak times where all those, I mean, humans are going at different speeds, walking and on wheels, and it just seems to me we've got to provide a better, a better way to do this. And although I think this is a good start, obviously, just sort of doing everything we can to make sure people know the rules and then trying to mitigate through your, you know, working the roadway a little bit. And then ultimately, you know, getting more enforcement going on, which is costly. Thank you.
Mr. Hurdman.
Yeah, if we're going to look at increasing the maximum fine from 50 to 200 bucks, you know, that's supposed to be a deterrent to people knowing that they could get fined $200 as opposed to 50 bucks. If we're going to do that, we need to dedicate that fee and that fine increase to enforcement costs, because that's really the root of the problem here, is, is lack of sufficient supervision and enforcement on the boardwalk. So I think Diane's probably going to chime in on that, but that's what I see the problem as. Talking about a second boardwalk, you know, I've been giving that some thought and I think all we're doing is just transferring the problem from one boardwalk to another, unless there's enforcement on both boardwalks, we're not really solving the problem. In fact, it may even get worse with a second boardwalk, as far as the observance of speed limits and that type thing, because there isn't any pedestrians that have to be dodged by bicyclist. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any, any other questions before we go out to members of the public?
I was just going to say, I couldn't punch the.
Yeah, that's okay. We've got a clerk right now that is just not very, not very technologically savvy.
City attorney has multiple talents.
All right. Ms. Dixon.
Real quick, on signage, I think signage can work if enforcement is a companion product or a companion service. I've said this before, in other cities, I know specifically, there's a promenade in Brooklyn, New York, where my daughter lives, so that's why I'm familiar with this, there's the Brooklyn Heights Promenade and it extends about a mile. And in really nice, lovely metal signage, no bikes or skateboards allowed, and you never see them. So it's been that way for decades and people respect it and no skateboard. I mean, even when I take my grandsons there, they are walking their skateboard to the park. So there's something, there's a disconnect in our city where we have visitors and maybe residents, I don't think our residents would violate laws, but there's, there is a disconnect with obeying the signs. It's a very simple requirement, do not speed over eight miles an hour. And the reason we're sitting here tonight and we have a room full of people and letters having been written is that people are violating these fundamental laws of our city with impunity, cavalierly and with impunity. And that is a concern. I've been dealing with this, I've been on the city council now almost six years, since my first town hall and 27 town halls later. You know, because you've been there, boardwalk safety has been literally the number one issue. And it's just been exacerbated during COVID because more and more people are at the beaches, we all know. So we have to find tonight, I want to listen to the residents, because there's a mixed opinion on dual sidewalks, dual promenades, it's a promenade, actually, it's not a bike path. So I really want to listen to what everyone has to say, I've read all the letters. We have to find a solution by the end of this evening. We're not going home until we find a solution to this problem tonight, just thought I'd let you know.
You're welcome to stick around. So, sorry, what I was going to say, I do apologize for laughing, especially into the mic. My, the reason I'm laughing only is because I seem to recall we had a, we decided to really increase our parking enforcement over in Coronel Mar, because our residents were assuring us, it was absolutely everyone other than our residents. And then it turned out, it was what, at least three quarters, yeah, three quarters of the tickets went to our residents, and suddenly there was a, no more outcry for that. Now, that's not the case here, I recognize that, I'm just laughing at, I'm only laughing because that, with the comment that our residents would never break laws, just, you know, they sometimes do, it's not often, but occasionally. All right. Before we go to public comment, you know, I'm actually going to call Chief Lewis up because this, the question of enforcement and discussion comes up every single time we talk about this. And, and I just want to at least ask you to, probably easier, actually, if you, that's fine, that one's fine. I'd like you to at least talk to the enforcement issue, because again, I wouldn't feel right going out to public comment before asking you to talk to that, that issue.
So I think when we, when we're talking about traffic and we're talking about boardwalk safety, and so, and some of you know this, but my perspective on boardwalk safety, I've worked this, I've worked this specifically.
Sorry, just one second. Can you hear him in the community room? Just give me a high sign if you can hear him. I just want to make sure. Okay. Yeah, I think it is, that's why, it's just not in here, that's why I want to make sure. Can everybody up here, can you hear him? Okay. That's fine.
So I can tell you my perspective on the boardwalk.
Oh, I'm sorry, I am going to ask you to switch over, Chief. Yeah, thanks. It's, it's okay. He's going to switch over to the other one.
So we'll start again.
There you go.
So here's my perspective on the boardwalk, and so, and I appreciate the complaints, I understand them. I've personally been dealing with it for the 30 years that I've been here, and I've written hundreds and hundreds of citations on my own. And so I don't think, what I go back to when I hear the, when I hear the issues and concerns, and I hear a lot of them, and I think the, it's important to look at the numbers, to look at the data, and to look at the overall context of what the boardwalk is. And Mr. Avery alluded to it earlier, so I went back and I found the last time that we surveyed the actual oceanfront sidewalk and to see the actual volume that is out there. And so I will cite from a survey here where, where we had our public works, folks, look at one block of the oceanfront between 16th and 15th Street on a peak day and a peak hour, I'll give you, August, a Sunday, and a peak hour in terms of traffic, all the traffic that went through, this is one block on a Sunday afternoon during August, the number was, within that one block and one hour, 954 people traveled through that one block. So I think that when we understand that that is the pipeline and the, and the, the volume that is out there, we, enforcement is always going to be a piece of any traffic issue, it always is. But there's also education, there's also engineering. And when we're looking at that type of volume, it takes a police officer 15 minutes to write a citation. So in that, and I'll tell you specifically in that hour, because I can tell you, there were, there were, in this one, there were seven skateboards that went through that block. It takes one police officer probably about 15 minutes to write a citation, okay? Within an hour, you still have 900 other people that have possibly gone through there. So I think we have to understand what the, what the bigger picture is with this in the boardwalk, and these are our actual verified numbers that I'm, that I'm citing here. That being said, our officers issue hundreds of citations. We've issued hundreds of them this year, we've issued hundreds of them last year, and hundreds and hundreds the year before that. So that's what the data tells me, and that's what the numbers show me, and that shows me. Now, the question is whether or not that is enough. And we can always do more, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to say that, as long as we're still getting complaints out here, then, you know, we can need to continue to emphasize these efforts. But that's, that is what we're dealing with out there. And, and those are our officers' efforts, and it's not just the officers that are out there on bicycles. We have our patrol officers that are paying attention to it, and we have our motor officers with everything else that's being asked of them as well to, to deal with this. So it's always part of it. The education piece is, is a huge part of it, and there's also the engineering things that Mr. Summers had talked about, that give us a hand with the compliance. Signage has to be a part of it, because we can't do enforcement without it. And I agree, I think there's some people that, there's so many signs, how do you, how do you not know what the rules are? And I think that some people, we see folks that do things until they get caught. And if we don't have those signs, we still have to make sure that these citations stand up in court. You know, it's not something where we're just going to, you know, walk away with a citation and never hear from again. We're still going to have to go in front of a judge. That officer's going to have to justify that violation and make sure that it, that it faces that legal scrutiny. That's why the signs are an important part of that as well. So those are the numbers, that's what I go back to when I look at the, when I look at the pipeline, as Mr. Avery alluded to.
All right. Just put your hand up and I'll call on you, Mr. Hurdman. Did you have any?
Yeah, I do. So John, what I just heard you say is, you basically don't have the resources to handle the volume of people that use a boardwalk on peak days like the one you just gave an example of.
Well, I think that we have to, no, and that's not, and I don't want, I don't want to say that, I don't want to, I don't want to come up here and say that we need more police officers.
And I don't want to put words in your mouth either, so.
But what I'm, what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to show with those numbers is, again, the, now, look, out of that 954 people that passed through that hour, the vast majority of those folks are following the rules.
Right.
Okay? So, but what I'm saying is that when, this is the issue that we're up, just the, the volume of it. And the issue that we have with, with the boardwalk is like, it's like we saw in Bayside, where we have, when I talk about some of these things that Mr. Summers had mentioned and maybe some of the traffic calming measures out there, I think those are important for us to look and see if they make sense out here. And I think the Bayside one is a perfect example of that. So we went, we went through that whole process, we put our motors out there and we saw that the speeds really weren't as high, on average, is what we were hearing from our residents. But the issue was with Bayside, and it's the same issue with, that we see with the boardwalk, is that we have this roadway here that lends itself to the ability for people to drive very fast. The traffic calming measures have, have made a big difference there. And so I think that some of the things that we're talking here, I think there's some promise in that, because on a day like I cited, on that, you know, where we've got 900 people going through one block, the chances of somebody getting on an electric bike, and I could tell you from being out there for hundreds and hundreds of hours myself, it's difficult to get over eight miles an hour. It's difficult, unless you have some really good balance, even to maintain yourself on a bicycle, because it is so packed out there. So we don't see those speeds on those days, but we do see them. And the comment about a residence, and this is from my experience, like in the morning, surfers are on their, I'm not going to characterize surfers, okay, I am one myself, but what I have seen is, you know, folks will get on the electric bikes early when there's not as many people out there on the boardwalk. And again, when it's, when it's not as busy as it would be on that, on that Sunday in August, it, again, lends itself to the ability to obtain those higher speeds. And I think the electric bikes has, with the prevalence of electric bikes, has just added an additional layer of complexity to what is already a very complex mixed-use situation out there on the boardwalk. And our boardwalk is different than what they do in Huntington and some of these other places. I can tell you, for the state beaches in Huntington, there is no enforcement. They have the State Park Rangers out there, and, and that is what they do. And there's, they have speed limits out there. I've yet to see anybody doing any kind of enforcement at the Huntington State Beach. It's just the state lifeguards, they have police officers out there, but that is not something that they're, that they're actively working. And those are large bike paths as well. The difference with those bike paths are, they're not up next to houses like ours are. And that's where ours is significantly different than, than Huntington. It's just a different environment for, for many, many reasons, that obviously the, the most apparent of all of them.
So I hear you saying that engineering might be a real significant piece of this solution. And, and I would like to point out, I hope I don't get in trouble for this, but we do have another boardwalk in this city, and it's on Babo Island. And, and we don't seem to have this problem on Babo Island, and that might be worth studying, looking into, why don't we have violations? We have the same kind of signage and everything. Occasionally, we'll have a biker, occasionally we'll have a skateboarder. But I do, I can tell you this, the residents who live on the Bayfront are very, very conscientious about policing it and giving people reminders, I don't know how many, boardwalk people are permanent residents, though.
And I can, I can agree with you that, I can tell you, when I was working on a bicycle and I would ride on the sidewalk on Babo Island and as a police officer, which I was exempt by the municipal code.
You know that.
Absolutely. Every single time. You're, you're right. And Babo Island is a little bit different, you, you don't see the, you don't see the volume that you see on the, on the peninsula a lot of times too, but for the most part, yes, we, we do see some pretty good compliance there and the residents are a big piece of that.
Absolutely. Ms. Dixon.
I think it was in 2015, 16, when we added, successfully added four, or replaced or reinstated four police officers that were, had, those positions had been laid off during the great recession. And now, and then we created the Peninsula Enforcement Team, which has been great, love the name. Could you talk about it, how effective it it's been? I know there really, while there are four officers that were added, I think there are only two per shift, so, and it's a seven-mile coastline. So I know there's the expectation people will, you've read the same letters we've all read, that people say they never see the police. Well, tell, let's give an update on the Peninsula Enforcement Team and how it's been operating.
Again, I, I operate off of data, and I operate what the, what the numbers show me and what our calls for service show me, and what our citation data shows me that. And I don't, and what I can tell you about our Peninsula Enforcement Team is, they're responsible in part for boardwalk safety, they're also the unit that we rely on to deal with the issues that we have associated with our beach as well. So, and those, particularly in the summer with the large crowds that we were seeing, so we have the boardwalk safety issues that we know about, and this has been something that we've been consistently dealing with. But we also saw the, the large crowds at the beach that we're dealing with, the alcohol violations, the, some of the things that we were dealing at night, closing the beaches and some of these other issues that we had that were really unique to the summer, that was also that unit's responsibility to manage as well. In addition to some of the things that we've seen now as we're coming out of COVID with the alcohol-related issues that had been part of complaints that we get in the peninsula. So, but they're not everything when it comes to enforcement down there. It's not just our Peninsula Enforcement Team, because when you look at the, when you look at the beach, you look at the bars, you look at the issues that we have down there, even from the, the bridge jumping things, that's part of the responsibilities that they have down there to, to deal with those quality of life issues in West Newport. So four officers, they, there's two of them, and they, they work a day shift and a night shift. But again, the peninsula is a big place with, with many issues and, and many different complaints and concerns that goes along with it. So we don't strictly rely on them, we have to do it as part of, our, our traffic officers will help out and, and impact these areas as well when we start to get complaints. We also have our patrol officers, that, that's part of their deal as well, to go out and, and spend some time in these areas where we're nowhere being impacted. We've taken our volunteers. Right now, COVID has changed things a little bit, we've had to scale back our, our volunteer program, but we've also had people out there passing out literature, making those types of contacts with folks. And again, approaching it with our volunteers, we do it from an ambassadorship standpoint, and it's actually pretty effective, believe it or not, because a lot of times, especially with the Suris and things like that, those are folks that are from out of town, and if you're from out of town and you don't understand the rules, the, the boardwalk seems like a reasonable place to, to take your Suri as opposed to one in the alley. So those are all the different things we're doing, and we're going to continue to do those things. We run campaigns when, when we're out there for, for speed. We have our motor officers with, that are specifically dealing with speed, and we know the times that we have them, and those are sometimes in the early morning hours, but there's, I mean, it happens at all times of day. The electric bikes definitely have the ability to, to up the speeds that we have out there as well. So we, we look in the areas where we're seeing the complaints, where we're having the issues, and then we try to, we try to impact those. Again, I'm not going to say that there's, by any means, that we can't do more or we can't write more tickets. I mean, I would never suggest that, and I'm never going to suggest that these, or take away the validity of these residents' observations. We listen to all of them and we apply our resources where we, where we think we can have the most impact in these areas.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Brenner.
John, it's my experience, just in the two years that I've been here, that you never will say that you can't do something. You always rise to the occasion and, and your officers try to do everything we ask of you, but we are asking a lot of you. And I just wrote down some of the things. We're dealing with loud and speeding vehicles. We're dealing with fires on the beach and short-term rentals and sober living homes. We want you to enforce those regulations and closing the beach at 10:00 p.m. and parking violations and homelessness and burglaries and drunks. And I love the fact that you've got this can-do attitude, but that's a lot to deal with. And it really makes me think that the more physical things that we can do to solve this problem, the better. Because I appreciate, I think that what you're doing is you kind of provide a force that people see you at times at different places. We know you can't be everywhere doing everything all at one time. And so you do a great job of that. But I think that we have to really look at everything that we can physically do to solve this problem so that it's not so much of an enforcement issue. So I don't, I appreciate, we appreciate you and how you try to do it all.
Well, and thank you. And I think that Dave's team has been really creative in looking at this, because we're all trying to find some solutions here to be able to deal with it, because we understand what the issues are. And so I think that that's part of this study. I think that all these issues that we're talking about here, I mean, it's one more thing to be able to help out with the overall safety issue that we're trying to impact out there. So I think they're all really good conversations to have. But again, it's part of it, it's the education piece. And that's not just the signs that are going up. There's always things we can do to continue to message with our, with the short-term rentals, for example. We have that ability to provide that information to folks that are visiting. Again, our social media campaigns, things like that that we do to continue to get the message out about the boardwalk and what is acceptable out there and what should be cited for, and really what the issues are out there, too. So it's education, it's the engineering things that we talked about, which I think these guys, it's very difficult to do. There's a lot of liability concerns with this because of the just diverse uses that are out there. And trying to find something that's gonna fit and hopefully not cause this issues to the city is a very difficult thing. And I think Brad's done a great job really looking at these. And then the enforcement, obviously, is an absolute piece of this whole discussion.
Can I just make one more comment, please?
Yep, go ahead.
I know myself as a council member, because we, and Diane, all of us, we receive email about this, it seems like, on a constant basis. Grace, I'd really appreciate knowing from Dave's department, from our traffic department, what is being tested, what's being tried out regarding this? What's being field-tested to get this situation under control on the boardwalk? Because it helps me in responding to my constituents to be able to say to them, well, we're giving this a try, we're trying this out, we're doing this. If we could get something like that, it would be very helpful. Just so they know that they have our attention and that we're trying to do something about it.
Okay, you mean so something maybe more written that we can have, that can be distributed? Yeah, we can actually provide more education about the things we're doing, yes.
I think the communication is a great idea. I would never discourage that. The people who are violating our boardwalk current codes are not reading our communications, they're not reading the signs, they're not gonna read a brochure. I think we have to find an innovative way to, it's the presence of more ambassadors, more officers every few blocks. Not constantly, and maybe we'll get through this in our discussion this evening, but on key weekends in the summer where we have the visible presence of our police officers, and I know they've got demands elsewhere in the city and on the peninsula, but just to show deterrence and show enforcement in its physical form. That's one thing we could be considering, because I don't think brochures and social media, it does something, but people are going to say, and I'll say, I've been saying this for five years, that if you Google Map Newport Beach, you will see the boardwalk is not called the boardwalk. It is called the Newport-Balboa Bike Path. And five or six years ago, right after I got into this, Tara contacted Google and went back and forth, she's not here any longer. And I know she attempted to get Google to change their map designation. So that may be a place to start again, because that is just a lure to people to come down here, because they think it's the Newport-Balboa Bike Path. And it is not. It's a promenade, otherwise known as a boardwalk. Mr. Webb.
Well, real quick to Mr. Hurdman's comment. I did want to credit Brad on this. This is a difficult subject. I have had more talks and encouragement with the traffic folks. Recognize, too, they are really trying to get outside their bubble. There isn't a lot. And Brad was very kind, but he's looked at a lot of bike trails, he's a biker himself. You don't find a lot of deterrents out there to reducing speed, because on the other hand, you enter in the liability realm. And I feel bad for the traffic folks, besides our police department and Aaron's department, our traffic folks are probably the third group that's always in court because of liability with traffic devices. So we are concerned about that. A slippery morning with fog and a bike hitting one of those things, a little kid hits one of those bumps and they go down, it's hard to defend that, particularly if it's not a common thing. That's what Brad mentioned, standards. Caltrans or something has no standards for this, which gives us a layer of protection, because we say there's a pro and a con to that. So we're cautious, and I think, again, I want to compliment Brad, he went out of his way. We understood where Mr. Muldoon wanted to go, we wanted to get something there. We're trying some kind of physical turn. Now, the question there is, do we put this at every block? Because with electric bike, you go over it, you're gone again. With pedal bike, you're probably building, thinking, how many do these put in? To the point where they're a nuisance to just the walkers, the shuffling senior who trips over it, the ADA deterrent that goes over the wheelchair. There are other factors that play into this. So it's a very difficult, physical, physical things, we want something physical besides just putting a bollard in? And again, we worry about people hitting that. If it gets to be such a big thing, and I think this problem's gonna grow, too, I hate to say it. I was in Costco this week, and guess what they're selling? Electric scooters, the next Christmas gift this year. The bird scooter without the bird on it is the big thing that they're selling right now. We're gonna start seeing those things. These devices are gonna grow. I have neighbor after neighbor getting electric bikes, particularly seniors, that just think this is a great item. We're gonna have problems with this.
Permanent solution, but periodic solutions. I know the sandwich board signs on the island, "Boardwalk to Walk in One Direction", were very effective during this COVID. So.
And just one last comment I heard, and I was gonna have Brad talk to you about. The Balboa Boardwalk is much different than the oceanfront, if you call it. It's circular, it doesn't really go anywhere. It's nice to go around, but as a bicyclist, the bicyclists use the boardwalk to go from the wedge to commute, to stay off the roads. It's a great way to get around the peninsula without having to get on the road. And you got a lot of that traffic, which isn't overrun the island. Some of the big differences there.
Mr. Avery. Sorry, I need you to.
I'm sorry?
Turn the mic on. He's asking if the solution.
It's like a block wall across, you know, you'd have to jump over it? We could do that.
I need to make sure people in the other room heard it. The question was, do you think the solution is concrete? Sorry, go ahead.
I just know you work with this stuff, but.
It's good to walk on, but maybe not hit.
It just seems to me, we have to separate the bikes from the pedestrians. I just, it seems to me that's a major piece of this.
So, and that's a good point. And through Diane's City Halls, which we've been sat through many of these discussions, we came to that point, maybe there is a physical separation. We are a little different from Long Beach. Long Beach has a path out on the beach. You could probably go faster out there, there's sand on their side, not a lot of conflicts. Our path is right against houses and a lot of comments we get is, I walk out my house, my kid walks out the front gate, you know, bikes are flying by. There may be some pluses to that. There's surely, and there're gonna be bike problems out there, there's gonna be congestion, there's gonna be speed, but getting that fast-moving obstacle away from the houses might be a positive thing. So we have to have that discussion. We haven't gone down that road yet, but I think it's something to explore. When I was in Huntington Beach, we did try to split the trails. Up on the Bluff Top, we actually put the wheel in, but we had the same problem, same discussion, just a different town. We ended up splitting some of the trails. Long Beach ultimately built another trail out on the beach. I don't know about Santa Monica, but that's some of the ways they've handled it that I've seen.
Because I don't think the solution is banning the bikes or banning the electric bikes even. I think it's just moving them out of ways. I think, I don't know, I think committees should try and look at this. But, you know, if you just added five feet or six feet to the existing boardwalk and just had people on one side and bikes on the outside.
At some point, the congestion, as John mentioned, the congestion keeps on going slower on busy days, on fast days to get spread out. I fear for John's group, if we try to ban electric bikes or something, guess what you're gonna see on the weekend? He's gonna have so many electric bikes going out, his folks are gonna stop. And then what's electric and what's pedal? It's gonna be another problem, you know, we could have that, so.
I just think we need to provide a better venue.
Anyway.
All right, before we get a public comment, just raise your hand, because I can't really see it too well. Okay, Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe in signage. I know it can be sort of visual clutter, but does a couple of things. Provides official notice for the courts, and it limits liability when someone claims they weren't aware, either civilly or criminally. Or it increases liability criminally, it limits liability civilly. I personally think that physical deterrence is a much better use of, much better deterrent, much more effective, and it's a better use of resources than our police officers. Unfortunately, we're seeing a lot of criminals released early in response to the COVID crisis. And as we talked about earlier today, we have a reduction of crimes through Prop 47 to 57. And I think our law enforcement are better served protecting homes and communities than handing out citations. I think it's very noble to achieve as such a humble man that he would hand out citations himself for the boardwalk. But I personally would rather attention given to mens rea crimes. Mens rea means evil mind. And although some residents may violate the law here in Newport Beach, Diane, they would not do so with an evil intent, unless it's just evil to go fast. I think going fast is fun. So I personally, the one option that was not up there was sort of the slower, increased speed bumps that might have a flat top on, at the very, sort of mesa part of it. I personally will not be supporting banning what I think is the future. If someone could put electric product on a boat and make a living doing it, we're gonna see electric-powered everything soon. And I think it's just not looking to the future. So signage is great. I would be supportive of a separate, sort of adjacent strip or widening the boardwalk for the sake of allowing more people to travel. I really didn't get any complaints about a speed bump. I got one from a surfer who wants to hold his board, has to sometimes bicycles at a consistent speed, and to be a little tougher, because he's got one arm on the board, one arm on the bar. And so I understand that, but that really was the only objection I got. The other sides are both kind of extreme. I'll keep it exactly the same and let's let electric bikes just go. Unwieldy, which I don't think is practical, and then there was a total ban. So for those reasons, I'll be voting against the item. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Duffield, would you like to speak? I'm trying to figure out, we've got, Mr. Harp is not our clerk, so I'm working through our speaker card, so I just want to make sure.
Yes, thank you. Well, I brought this up a while back, and since then, I've learned a lot. But I can assure you, the, it, to me, when I read that there are no motorized vehicles allowed, essentially, that's what an electric bike is. It doesn't have an engine, it has a motor. And you've got signage right now that says, "No motorized vehicles." So if you don't want to ban electric bikes, you better change that, because that's what it is. It does not have an engine with fuel and all that, it has an electric motor. So I think we should understand that. And I'm also, have changed my thinking about banning them, because you can't really do that. And I do believe that the physical deterrence is the way to go. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, oh, I'm sorry. Yep, go ahead, Mr. Hurdman.
Yeah, I just want to point out, in the last 24 hours, we've heard from 354 people on this topic in the form of emails. And 344 of them are in favor of banning the use of e-bikes on our boardwalks, and 10 are not. So I think that amount of public input is significant here and that we cannot ignore it. Thank you.
You got 350 emails? Okay, I think I got significantly less emails than that. All right, we'll go out to public comments on this. We'll start in the community room.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I wanted to thank the staff for bringing forward a draft and revised ordinance that does have some good stuff in it. There are some gaps still. This issue does have to be dealt with. You know, to dance around it, the community has been jerked around. People are getting hurt, they are getting hurt on a regular basis. We have kids that walk across the boardwalk, people walking to and from the beaches. We have an unsafe, hazardous situation with the boardwalk. And some of the things that are being brought forth are good, and some of them don't make any sense at all. And I'm not gonna mince words, because we've all been round and round on this subject. Let's deal with it and let's get it done. So first of all, with regard to the definition, in the proposed ordinance, it does state the motorized devices. I think it does a great job, and the people I've talked to do as well. It needs to not accept, but to include the areas that are contiguous to the boardwalk, such as the blacktop at Newport Elementary School, such as the sidewalks that are contiguous to the boardwalk that go out to the beach. There has to be regulation. Those are, in fact, used heavily by these motorized vehicles, as well as by pedestrians and people with non-motorized vehicles. So you cannot, they're part and parcel of regulating the boardwalk. Also, relative to safety, we need to move past engineered solutions. We need to go back to KISS. A lot of these so-called engineered solutions are over-engineering, and they haven't worked. In fact, they've been overproductive. So let's put that aside, and let's really figure out what we can do to solve the problem. We don't need those electric signs, because what happens is people look at them and they use those, particularly the electric bikes, as an opportunity to race them. Speed bumps are a non-starter on that boardwalk. You've got multiple use, you've got a lot of people will stumble, they'll fall, they'll be counterproductive. So I would say, get away from the concept of calming, and let's simplify the situation. So let's simplify the signs. We saw a number of signs, and I know, and I appreciate the staff is trying to bend over backwards to solve the problem, but I fear it's the engineer's curse. I work with engineers all the time. We need KISS, so keep it simple. And you can guess the last letter. But for the signs, they need to be consistent, they need to have limited information. They do need to cross-reference to the sites, so the officers can use those and can use those to cite with confidence and to stop people and enforce with confidence. We don't need all the colorful graphics. We need signs, the same sign, repeat, repeat, repeat. So if anybody is using the boardwalk, they're accessing the beach area, they see what it says, it's clear. Okay? We need to eliminate, we do need to eliminate electronic, prohibit electronic motorized devices from being on that boardwalk. That's the only way that we're gonna be able to restore any modicum of safety. We don't need to examine engineered solutions. And we do need to have enforcement, whatever it takes. And that's a big gap, because the police have not been enforcing safety on the boardwalk. I'm sorry, John, I know you're trying hard, and we all appreciate it.
Thank you, Denise.
Counsel, you need to act on this.
Thank you, Denise. Thank you, Denise.
You need to act, and you do need to act tonight. We've had enough.
We've heard you, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor, Council members, Joe Angelo. I live at 1504 West Oceanfront. And as Chief Lewis pointed out, that study between 15th and 16th Street, I happen to live right in the heart of that. My patio is three feet wide, and when I'm sitting in my living room, I'm literally three feet from the boardwalk. I'm there in the morning, I'm there in the late afternoon, every day. I walk the boardwalk, and I ride my bicycle on the boardwalk. And in my opinion, overwhelmingly, the boardwalk is dangerous. I personally have seen injuries in front of my house. I have gone and got bandages and Neosporin and given it to the people who have been injured. Just last week, I'm sitting on the bench, there's three young boys on their skateboards. They're doing the tailspin, one of them falls, and whammo, the board goes flying out and hits a lady about 30 years old right in the shin. Motorized skateboards, the single-wheel motorized skateboards, the four-wheel motorized skateboards. Motorized skateboards at 3:00 a.m. And I know whether it's motorized or whether it's a regular skateboard, because I hear on a regular skateboard, click, 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 click. Motorized skateboard, I hear click, 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 click. So I know, and I have anxiety, here comes the skateboard. Now, I'm gonna estimate the speed of these motorized skateboards at 15, even though I think they're going faster. What do I base my opinion on? I rented, a buddy of mine, we rented electric bikes up in Huntington. up in Huntington, and when we got up towards Sunset Beach, there's not many people on that blocktop boardwalk, and I accelerated, and it had a speedometer. That electric bike would go 19 miles an hour. I have seen electric bikes going 15, 16, 18 miles an hour. The boardwalk is 10 feet wide. They go, if there's two people walking in front, they'll go to the outside, and just like when we're driving on a two-lane highway, and we're trying to decide whether we're going to pass that slow vehicle, and there's an oncoming vehicle, we have to make a decision. So out goes the electric bike, hit the accelerator, and I mean, these electric bikes will accelerate. And they accelerate, and they try to beat that space between that oncoming bike. God forbid you have a Suri, an electric bike, an electric skateboard. One of the council members mentioned tonight, isn't the pipeline getting a little full? Well, it is.
Okay, please finish up, please.
My time's up. So we really just need to ban all-electric-powered vehicles. And then enforcement. I think we need enforcement. I'm not a believer in signs. I think the attitude of the person on that boardwalk that's speeding around an electric bike is, I don't have to follow rules.
Appreciate that.
I think that's what the mindset is.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you very much. All right, we'll go to the next speaker.
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, this is Jim Mosher. As the mayor said at the beginning, the item tonight actually has two parts to it. One is a sort of a study session to collect ideas and give direction to the staff about things you want brought back for future action. Another part of it is an immediate action to make amendments to our existing municipal code. Regarding the study session part, I, as a cyclist, think that the digital speed signs are useful. It is difficult for a person on a pedaled bike to be sure whether they're going eight miles per hour. You don't really have a sense of that. I do not think, though, that the signs should start flashing when you're over eight miles per hour, keep flashing until 15, if that's what we heard, and then go blank. I agree with one of the written comments, that as soon as you go over eight miles per hour, the sign should simply flash and say, "Slow down," if it had digits to do that, or some sort of a symbol to indicate that you're in violation immediately. Regarding the immediate action you're taking tonight to amend the municipal code, that itself has two parts to it. One is to raise the fine, which I have no problem with. The second part is to add some definitions. I do have a problem with that part. I think our goal in amending municipal code should always be to simplify the code, not to complicate it. The reason we're adding the definitions is the explanation of the speed limit currently in the municipal code says, "No cyclist, roller skater, or pedestrian shall exceed eight miles per hour while on the boardwalk." Apparently, people find a loophole that they're not a cyclist, roller skater, or pedestrian. So we're adding more definitions. We're inventing something called a motorized transportation device. We have a long explanation. If you look at the actual printed signs about the eight mile per hour speed limit, they say, "All users must obey the eight mile per hour." Our code could simply say, "All users shall not exceed eight miles per hour." Same thing for unsafe operation. "All users shall be prohibited from unreasonable risk of injury to others." Same with direction of flow. It should say, "All users," and that seems to be the current intent. I see no reason for complicating our code by adding these definitions. We should be simplifying it so people won't try to invent a new loophole. The rules apply to everyone. Just say, "All users." Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Well, my name is Fred Levine. I've lived in Newport Beach for over 20 years. I'm on the board of Newport Beach Central Committee. I've been going through this probably for the past 15 years. I think I wrote a beautiful speech. Everyone will know what I'm going to say anyway, but it's time to do something. We keep kicking the can down, and really, there are issues that we should go through. The boardwalk is dangerous. The speeding is off the wall. I need the city council to really do something. Diane Dixon said that we have to do something tonight. We need action. I mean, you've had hundreds and hundreds of people write and call. This is not something we close our eyes and ears to, and nothing's going to happen. We need action. Signage. It alerts people of what's going on. Do they listen? No, they do not. I've lived down there long enough to know, oh, eight miles an hour, great, next subject. I really don't understand why we keep going through the same thing, and I keep saying it over and over and over. This is an accident waiting to happen. I've called it the 405 freeway. We've heard all the cliches. But I worry about the kid that runs out of their patio and gets hit by a bike at 20 miles or 15 miles an hour, or they come off the sand. I worry about the teenagers that are down there to have fun, the adults that want to enjoy this. And what about the senior citizens that have told us they don't have fun even walking? They think it's dangerous. I don't understand what is happening over and over again. We have brilliant minds. And the other thing we should do in the legal issue, God forbid someone really is dangerously hurt, the liability that they're going to do, because we keep approaching this, but we don't come up with the answers. Widening the boardwalk, doing this, we know the Coastal Commission, and it's going to take 10 years. We need to act now. Right now, it's time to do something to make the tenant and the visitors come down and feel safe. It's not safe. It isn't. I just want to understand one other thing. We know the speeding. We know what's going on. We've had enough surveys to know that we can get a doctorate degree, and we know the problem. We have to address it. I really believe part of it is enforcement. I think the Newport Police have done an amazing job. I think they need the support for city council, whether it be additional officers, whether it be creative ideas, but right now, you come down to boardwalk at any time other than 12 o'clock in the afternoon on a Tuesday. It is insane. And I'm just asking the city council to do something tonight. We have to get rid of the motorized devices. That's a must. I don't understand you getting a lot of people saying what I'm saying. We must do something. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Maureen Cotton. I'm with the Central Newport Beach Community Association. I thank you for your time. I reiterate what everybody in this room has already said. It is incredibly dangerous. I live 200 yards from the oceanfront, from the boardwalk, and it's amazing, the number of people and the speeds at which they're moving. Mr. Muldoon, I recommend that you and your family with strollers and little bikes come spend a weekend going on our boardwalk, and maybe you'll change your mind because you aren't experiencing it. You're just remembering what you remember from your high school years. I want to say that I appreciate what the city staff have done with respect to this topic, our understanding, based on my conversations with the Newport Beach Police Department, is that they can't even regulate speed on the boardwalk. They don't have LIDAR, so it can't be enforced, right? So it has to be unsafe speed. It has to be unsafe, not speed violations. In the past two years, there were 980 citations issued on the boardwalk. Only 18 of them were for speeding, which is ridiculous, because going back to Chief Lewis's study, I have a letter from June 12th where I presented the same topic to you all in 2017. That survey that was done August 21st and 22nd on a weekend, 20th and 21st, I apologize, there were 2,216 bikes going westbound, 1,996 bikes going eastbound. There were 968 pedestrians, 50 skaters, 50 skateboarders, 10 Suris, and 15 Segways. Yes, we've had a drop in Segways. I will admit that. We've had probably a pretty big drop in Suris. We've had more skateboarders and more electric skateboarders. But the number of bicycles has tremendously increased, and the e-bikes are incredibly fast and incredibly dangerous. To ignore this is to put the city in a position to be sued, because really, guys, you've been put on notice, and how many public hearings? How can you ignore that? I've had a number of phone calls from our memberships, from people who live on the boardwalk, who, like Fred said, are afraid to walk out their front doors because of people that zip by. As Councilman Duffy said in February, these are electric motors. He said it again today. And the important thing about knowing that they're dangerous, they're quiet. You can't even hear them coming. So it's incredible to have a 200, 300-pound conveyance with a person on it, combined weight 250 pounds, hit you going 15 miles an hour. It's just dangerous. So, you know, I agree with Diane. This has been going on forever. I completely disagree with you, Kevin, but I respect the time that you've given me today.
Thank you, Maureen. All right, next speaker, please. All right, seeing no more in the community room. Do we have any calls? Oh, all right.
Hi, my name's Rudy Svercek. I live down on Peninsula Point. I have four electric bikes, and we use them as kind of essential transportation on the weekends. In summertime, we don't want to get in our cars, so we're on the trail all the time. On a side note, I am a big fan of the police. I stop sometimes on the peninsula and thank them for all the work they do. I see all the people that are stopping and all the hard work they're doing. I'm a big fan. But I'm on the sidewalk all the time, and I really don't see many police on the sidewalk at all. And they can only do so much, so I would suggest that we increase the budget to have more police and more presence. Their presence makes a huge difference, just like the Harbor Patrol in the bay. When there's the presence of the Harbor Patrol, the boats, everybody slows down, and it makes a big difference. So their mere presence, even if they're not writing tickets, and people see them there, people slow down. I would also post the fine. If it's a $200 fine, I would post that for speeding, it's a $200 fine. That may get some more attention. So that's my recommendation. And I would also, on a side note, encourage a substation, a sub-police station down on the peninsula at point of entry and exit, maybe around the Lido House, or someplace on Baobab Boulevard, maybe near the new fire department, but a police substation where there's signage and there's visibility of police, it makes a huge difference. So I strongly recommend more presence. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments in the community room? Okay, go to the phone. All right, go ahead. All right, if you can hear me, go ahead. One more try. If you're on the phone, you can hear me. Go ahead. All right, we'll go to the next caller. Hi, go ahead. Is it on our end? So if you can hear me on the phone, you can start talking? All right, if it's the third one, it's the third problem, then it's going to be on us. Oh, hang on. All right, go ahead.
Yes, hello, my name is Buzz. Can you hear me?
We can. Thanks. Go ahead.
Yes. I think the way to evaluate this topic is maybe to ask two questions. One, are we taking away and denying people's opportunity to have fun with electric bikes? Or do we have a significant safety issue here with these bikes? And my first comment is that electric bikes allow certain people the ability to be mobile in a way that could not due to their personal situation. So I'm sure the city can figure out some way to allow certain people special permits with the bikes. I live on the boardwalk, right here, on the boardwalk, right near 8th Street. I moved here in 1986. I've been here now going on 35 years. So for the first 30 years or so, I've observed, participated in safe fun on this boardwalk, walking, running, biking. Never rode on a Suri, but maybe that was fun. Don't know. There was never any significant safety issues during that time. None, including the Suri situation. Maybe the skateboards, but that's a little different discussion. But during that whole period, there were bikes here. There were lots of vehicles, people, and so forth. We didn't have any type of a problem with the bikes at that time. The signs then and now state, "No motorized vehicle." I think the reason this rule was established by the city long ago is due to significant safety concerns. Now we've got electric bikes. I'm not sure how many of the council members have spent a long, dedicated period of time on the boardwalk here like I have, the pleasure to do, living here. Most people riding these bikes are the younger age category. I say this because if they were, if there were no electric bikes, they could be riding normal bikes or driving their cars to get somewhere quickly from point A to B. A lot of them, not all of them, but a lot, ride at an incredible speed. Myself and my neighbors yell, "Slow down," and we get the expected finger wave response. I've seen so many near misses here of these speeders, missing young mothers with their kids or others who are trying to maneuver around them or jumping onto the sand. It's amazing there has not been a significant accident. The situation goes on now daily, all of the time. This isn't happening because of the COVID time period. This is not a situation caused by an influx of visitors. So if these speeding bikers need to get somewhere quickly, why not have them get into their car, drive their car, or take their electric bikes onto the streets? Now regarding what I see, these recommended solutions, the idea of signage improvements, you know, that's been ignored in the past. And it'll probably, you'll spend a lot of time, a lot of money putting good stuff up there signage-wise, but I don't see that improving.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'd like to invite any of the members of the council to come down here, sit on my patio, and look at this. You've got to see this to understand and believe it. So please recommend us allowing this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. This is probably about the fifth time I've had to cut someone off, so I'm just going to remind everyone. It's three minutes for literally every person. I just want to be clear on that. So go ahead. All right, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can. Thanks. Go ahead.
Perfect. I was the first caller, and so I think there were some tech issues, but...
Oh, thank you for calling back. Oh, did we really just lose them? Did he hang up? All right, if you were that person, please call back. Okay. All right, go ahead.
Hello?
Yep, go ahead.
Hi, how you doing? My name is Jason.
My name is Jason David. We love your boardwalk, we love your police department. I have a son that's 14 years old, is disabled. And your community and your police officers seen us on the beach cruising on our three-wheeled cruiser that's electric. And we do drive the speed limit. And we've noticed that the electric ones aren't really the ones speeding all the time. It's also the regular bicycles. People are out there exercising on regular bicycles, speeding around us on our electric scooters, not just that. I think that if you look at... Hi, how you doing? My name is Jason David.
Oh, if you're listening, just mute what you're listening to.
So what I'm saying is, it's not fair to say that there's people only on electric scooters speeding. Because I see people on bicycles riding by there exercising as fast as they can, getting upset that I'm going slow on a regular bicycle. So if you decide to cancel an electric scooter, then you guys should cancel all type of bikes because they're going just as fast, if not faster, because they're exercising. I'm trying to cruise around with my son very slowly and to try to keep him happy. And we don't have that many good days. He has epilepsy autism, I don't know how long, you know, when we try to utilize the good days, we go to your beach and enjoy the days there. Hello?
Yes, keep going.
So for us, we utilize electric scooters there. We need them. And I get it that people are speeding, but just like the roads, there are signs and people that don't obey the signs, best ticket. People don't obey the signs on the roads, they don't obey the signs there. But the people that do shouldn't be punished. And it's very hard for us, especially with COVID, there's nothing going on. We can't do anything for my son that's stuck at home, we can't do anything. This is one of the things that are like the most important things in his life, to go enjoy life. Your police department donated him an electric scooter. Thank you, guys. Officer Maloney and the crew seen us out there and they came out there to see me taking care of my son alone and they came and donated something to us and were very kind and helped me out in a special way, one of the best days of our entire lives. Now to take that away, the electric stuff there, it would hurt us detrimentally. But not just that, it keeps him healthy, keeps him having something to do, you know? I get it, people are speeding, but the people that are speeding should be held accountable. But the people that are going there and enjoying themselves and doing it the right way, staying under eight miles per hour, shouldn't be penalized for it. I just want to say thank you for the police department. You guys have made our lives so much better by donating that to us and always being kind to us. And I've seen the police out there all the time. And I see bicycles speeding past us all the time that are not electric or not motorized. So they should both be, if you guys decided, any bikes should be dangerous, should be all bikes. It's just whoever speeds over eight miles per hour.
Understood. Thank you very much. All right, we'll go to the next caller. All right, go ahead.
Can you hear me okay?
We can, thank you. Go ahead.
Great, this is call number three. I was the first caller and I think there were some issues and then I got hung up on. So anyway, I'm glad I'm finally through. My name is Max Johnson and I'm a resident of the Balboa Peninsula Point community. And, you know, in the topic with boardwalk safety tonight, I think two words that come to mind are consistency and clarity. And I think the consistency with the signs as well as the clarity of those signs. And so I think not only the feedback from some of the police officers that, you know, are trying to enforce the speeds and just the other safety issues and hazards on that boardwalk have said, there's so many signs that it can be so confusing to so many people that are coming down here. So I think if we were to clean up the number of signs and again, like other speakers have said, just have the same consistent signs all the way up and down the boardwalk. I think less is more. And I think if we were clear on the signage, I think that would go a long way. You know, another point that I wanted to make is when Chief Lewis came up and just had said, had mentioned some data, I don't know exactly when that was, but I thought of Labor Day weekend where we broke records down here in District 1, where over 180,000 people showed up in District 1 in one day. And so I go back to just that day and I feel most of my neighbors down here on the Peninsula Point have not had one weekend where it's quiet or calm. And that equates to no parking whatsoever, that the boardwalk is just intact all throughout COVID. And so I also look at data with sales of electric e-bikes going up as almost 4,000% in Laguna Beach in the past few months and almost 900% in Newport Beach. So the fact that sales of these e-bikes have gone up instrumentally compared to last year also goes to show that the popularity of these devices is only getting, you know, more and more as the years go on. So I pray staff for including the amendment for the clarity of the wording of, I think, allowing more devices as other, whatever, hoverboards, all these other devices that are being created. So I think it will be important to have in the municipal code, something that is a broad category of all of these devices. So clarity, consistency, I said that. And then the other comment that I wanted to make was also aligned with some speakers is saying that I am not in favor of banning, I think, electric e-bikes. I go to my neighbor and friend Barbara, who is almost 90 years old, and she just got an e-bike and, you know, it's for her to get out of the house more. So I do also know the gentleman that spoke previously with his son. I know our pet crew and our police department were really instrumental and still needing a bike to him. So I'll wrap it up in just saying, I think for the people violating the speed and those bikes are necessary to be held accountable, but to please allow those that want to enjoy the boardwalk the opportunity to do so, especially the ones that are ADA, you know...
Okay.
Yeah, related to handicaps and whatnot. So thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, how many more do we have? Hi, go ahead.
Yes, hello? Can you hear me?
We can, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm a 28-year permanent resident of West Newport. I've walked on the beach and the boardwalk almost every day for those years and whenever I could get a chance. And today I walked six miles from my house down to the pier. And now, because of my age at 83, I'm not walking on the boardwalk anymore, I walk the alleys. And the only reason I walk the alleys is because it's too dangerous to walk the boardwalk. You can't escape the bicycles and the motorized skateboards and scooters and I've even seen motorized motorcycles on this boardwalk. And you can't put up enough signs and you can't do enough enforcement because Newport Beach is not really big on enforcement. And I only have to mention the Fourth of July this last year and all the troubles you're having with STRs. The administration does not want to enforce because I believe they don't want to insult visitors. Here's your answer, folks. You have to have another lane constructed adjacent to the boardwalk and restrict all wheel vehicles to that other lane. Put up a cable between the two and have crosswalks at regular intervals at the ends of streets, probably. Once you've done that, you're completely out of the enforcement problem, except for the few scofflaws who want to go on the old boardwalk. But you'll make it like it was five to 10 years ago, a really pleasant adventure. And I could maybe get back on the boardwalk instead of having to hide in the alleys. Thanks very much for your attention, but that's the only answer you ever have and you'd get rid of the problem today if you decide to do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, next speaker, please. Hi, go ahead.
Hi, yes, my name is Peter Hoffman.
My name is Peter Hoffman.
Hi, if you're listening.
And I've been a longtime resident of Newport Beach. I ride, walk or run the boardwalk every single day. The thing is, is that there is no enforcement anymore. I love our police, I'm not trying to bash them, but I rarely see any police officers on the boardwalk. I see people riding their skateboards, I see people on their electric bikes, I see people walking their dogs, which frankly is even more dangerous than some of these electric bikes. All we need to do is have enforcement. There used to be a time, I remember, when you could not drive down Balboa Boulevard over 25 miles an hour without getting a ticket. There used to be a time when you could not have your dog out on the beach in the middle of the day without the animal control coming by and giving you a ticket. You could not have a six-pack of beer out on the beach because the police would come by and make you pour it out. I actually saw a police car drive by kids with a beer pong table. There is nothing else you can do with a beer pong table except drink beer. And they drove right by it. Why? We used to have the reputation, you come here, you do wrong, you get a ticket. Not anymore. Why? That's all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Hi, go ahead. So you're gonna want to mute what you're listening to, then? Go ahead.
I tried.
Okay, go ahead. All right, if you can hear me, go ahead.
I can hear you, I can hear you, okay? Am I okay?
Yes, you are, go ahead.
All right, my name is Marlen Nuthell. And I am a property owner on the peninsula since 2002. We, my husband and I have gone to more than one meeting with our representative Diane Dixon. And this problem has been addressed already. My husband and I walk the boardwalk and we ride our bikes daily when we are there. And I think that putting signage, the signage that is already there is worthless because there's too many words, number one. I think that maybe if you want signage, that it say only pedal bikes and pedestrians I think the problem of ADA, motorized vehicles is a non-problem because they exist and can exist because they can. I don't think that's the city's problem. I think that maybe if enforcement is an issue, which it is, that we use police volunteers and maybe give them whistles, like they do in Brooklyn, Mrs. Dixon, to direct and enforce, not just issue tickets, but to recall people what their obligation is to obey the law. I think that maybe that's all I have to say, except that I've already addressed another issue with Mrs. Dixon, and that is cars on the boardwalk. And I think that if Mrs. Dixon recalls my emails to her, she will recall the pictures that I've sent her with cars on the boardwalk accessing the boardwalk from the Balboa parking lot. Thank you very much for all of your hard work and effort as public representatives and my husband and I enjoy participating in our public.
Great, thank you very much. All right, next caller, please. Hi, go ahead.
Hi, this is Sean Leptin Smith speaking.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I was just calling to connect with the bike, electric bikes on the boardwalk. And I'm a Newport Beach resident. And I actually own a company called Electric Bike Company in Newport Beach that employs 45 people, as well as a showroom in Huntington Beach that employs about seven people. And obviously feel quite strongly about the allowing bicycles and electric bikes on the boardwalk and just wanted to voice my opinion on that. I think the main point I wanted to make was, you know, electric bikes will be manufactured, you know, with batteries inside the frame and motors so small you can hardly see them. In the future, you won't be able to tell the difference between a regular bike and an electric bike. And I think it's, you know, to distinguish between, you know, bicycles and electric bikes is probably pointless. And it's really a speed issue, in my opinion. The bicycles are getting, electric bikes are getting lighter, you know, and more unnoticedable. So if you want to police, you know, the bikes, I think it's have, you know, automatic or, you know, motion-intensive speed limit boards that either flash or show the speed and keep the speed limit under eight miles an hour. And I think that would be, you know, our suggestion. Obviously it would have a huge impact on our business if electric bikes are just ruled out completely. But if it's managed and it's policed at the speed limit, then not only electric bikes, but any bike, you know, on the boardwalk, gets a speed limit and, you know, we would obviously feel strongly for that.
Okay.
Hello?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, you know, obviously amazing, you know, we do a lot of tours and test rides and, you know, things around town and the boardwalk being such a beautiful place with, you know, international guests and people to come down there. Parking is always a mission, so letting them be able to ride their bikes down there, not congest the traffic or the parking and allowing them to go on the boardwalk is great. We also have three young kids that go to the local schools here. One goes to Carden Hall and the other goes, one goes to Enston and one goes to Newport Harbor. And all avid surfers. And I think, you know, chasing them off the boardwalk would make them go into the roads, which would obviously then put them on the date.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll go to the next caller. Hi, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Mike Glenn. I live on Balboa Peninsula. Actually live on the boardwalk on the bayside where no bikes are allowed. We get a lot of bikes out here, but it's not a big deal. I used to live in a downtown area, right on a main drag in a different city. And I can tell you that if you had a kid out there and they were to run through your gate and into the street unsupervised, there would be a problem. And so in those cases, I highly recommend that people supervise their children when they are aware the danger is around. That's the only thing that makes sense to me. I get it, it's crowded boardwalk. We live in a place where people want to visit. This is not something that we should be ashamed of or try to quell. The people who live on the boardwalk, myself included, we knew what we were getting into when we signed up to live zero feet away from a main thoroughfare that is designed to move people back and forth. Now, it sounds like everybody's problem here... Now, it sounds like everybody's problem here has always been the speed. It's speed, 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 speed. That's all I'm hearing. Ticket the speeders. If, if there's an issue where we don't have enough police to ticket the speeders, then how on earth are we going to have enough police to decipher whether or not there's a bicycle with a battery inside the frame or not? That sounds like a ridiculous law. It sounds like a ridiculous waste of our police resources, and moreover, it's not targeting the problem. The previous city staff reports have indicated that electric bikes are not the problem. It is just people who speed. That happens on regular bikes, electric bikes, scooters, electric scooters, whatever it is. Some people speed. It's just in their blood. I don't know. If that's a problem, then address the problem. But this is a lot like living next door to a highway, being afraid that you can't walk out onto the highway, and then asking to ban all Lamborghinis because some people are speeding. It's just ridiculous, guys. If there's a problem with speeding, enforce against the speeding. Uh, that's, electric is the way of the future. We all know that. We're seeing it right now. We're going to have a lot more electric vehicles coming out. It's going to be the way. We can look like the backward city that has banned modern-day transportation because a few people couldn't figure out how to ticket speeders, or we could ticket speeders, guys. It's, it's, it's your call. This is, this is absurd that it's gotten to this level, though. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Carmen Rossum. Um, eh, I support the banning of electric bicycles and vehicles on the boardwalk. I hear the other, eh, speakers that said, well, the problem is the speeder, but, uh, electric bicycle can go faster than, uh, regular bicycle. And you're not going to change the behavior of the people that break the rules unless you start issuing citations. I, if you look at a list of events today, for example, at four or five p.m., there was a skateboarder, uh, that was a disturbance, and they were not cited, they were advised. There is already enough education. We need to take action and take citations, give citations. Now, the boardwalk is, shall we look at as a total ecosystem, not yes itself, where they talk about widening the boardwalk, i- is not a solution. Having a second lane is not a solution either. You will have now another lane to, that you will have to enforce because the behavior is not going to change. In fact, if you build it, they will come, and you will have more people, and you will have people speeding, and it's going to be a freeway. The beach, eh, the people that come here to go to the beach will have to now cross the four or five freeway trying to get to the beach, to the water. So that's not a solution. Also, in a previous council meeting, eh, Diane Dixon fought really hard to add an additional police officer in the budget. What has happened with that? The reason for that additional police officer was to take care of issues in the boardwalk, and that hasn't happened. So I would like to hear from Chief Lewis, what has been done about that? That additional budget was to take care of issues in the boardwalk. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to correct that. That, that's not accurate. We did not pass, we, we did not add a, a police officer for the boardwalk. We actually specifically added a officer for no specific purpose. That was, I just want to correct that for the record. Let's go ahead. All right, go ahead.
Yes, hi, this is Tony Zaram, the EV Riders. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much, Mayor, and City Council. Um, you know, eh, the point that I want to make is, was brought up before, and that's really, it's the rider, not the vehicle. Um, it's, it's almost as if we're giving life to these vehicles. Um, in, in any case, it's really a, a human decision on how fast somebody goes. I mean, consider the fact that you can drive a Toyota Prius at over 100 miles an hour on the freeway, driving, whizzing right by a Porsche that's following the laws at 55 miles per hour doing the speed limit. I mean, is it, is it the vehicle or is it the rider? And I think that's where, where the misconception is. Um, in terms of motorized vehicles, and to check with the Department of Motor Vehicles, electric bikes are not a motorized vehicle. Motorized vehicles, when that term was developed, was, was specifically for mopeds and gas-burning, fuel-emission-type vehicles. Electric bikes, under Governor Brown's 2015 ruling, was allowed, which allowed electric bikes in Class II, Class III to have the same rights of pedal bikes. And pedal bikes can go just as fast, if not faster, than some of the electric scooters and electric rider, riders. Uh, at our store, we have an electric rideable that's smaller, lighter, and safer than a, than a bike. So to outlaw a vehicle like that just does not make any sense, and as the gentleman pointed out earlier, I think we're looking at the wrong, the wrong side of the equation because what it really comes down to is, is the individual and what they decide to do, and to penalize all of those that are following the law, uh, just for the sake of a vehicle, having a vehicle that goes faster, our can of possibility of going faster does not make a lot of sense. And, and, you know, frankly, I think the city needs to, uh, reconsider that situation and further do diligence as well.
All right, thank you. We'll go to the next speaker. All right, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Go ahead.
Oh, oh, hi. Uh, my name is Blake, and I work for a company called, uh, Electric Bike Company. Uh, it's a local manufacturer in Newport Beach. And, um, I realize that, you know, this has become like a very, um, complicated issue, and one of the things that I think really needs to be, uh, enforced about it is really the speed, um, it really is a speed issue. Um, if you take, for example, bikes that are seven-speed bikes, 10-speed bikes, even 21-speed bikes, uh, they can go much faster than an electric bike. Not only that, but you can even tell your speed on one of these bikes. On an electric bike, you actually can. Um, you have your LCD display screen, which actually has the speed of which you are going, so, um, we don't feel that e-bikes are the issue. We feel that, you know, it's really like a, a very, uh, speed is the issue. You know, as long as there's like a very strict, uh, speed, um, enforcement, uh, we feel that, you know, all these issues will really go away, so, um, that's pretty much all I have to say. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, just for timing purposes, how many more? Just one? All right, go ahead. Hi, if you can hear me, go ahead.
Hi, yes, thank you. Hi, I ride a lot, uh, my whole life, all the beach cities, right? And all cities have this issue. My thought is, all the cities need to be in sync. Electric bikes are not going away. I believe they're dangerous. I am a peddler, and I think, uh, electric bikes are cheaters, but that's okay. Um, they're dangerous. We need to post speed limit signs. We need to post signs when those are surpassed. I'd catch a few. And then, like, in other cities, we have walk signs near crowded areas like Newport Plaza, and people have to get off and walk their bikes in these areas. They can't go flying through. And that's my two cents. And if bikers don't like it on electric bikes, they can take alleys and side streets, but they need to stay off the main path. Even when I'm pedaling, if a kid runs out in front of me, I hurt him, stop. I can imagine if I had a motor. So for everybody to be safe, speed limit, fine, and walk bikes in certain areas. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we're going to bring it back up to the dais for discussion, and, um, here's my strong recommendation. Since we've got, I'm going to do this, since we've got two basic issues on the, the table, one is, uh, to discuss the proposed municipal code amendments, the other is to provide staff recommendation. My recommendation is going to be to discuss the proposed changes to municipal code first, and then go into the discussion about the, um, recommendations to staff, uh, you know, to bring, to bring something back, if anything. So with that, I want to talk about the language of the code first. Um, I actually, I will say, oh, there you are. Mr. Harp. Wow. Yeah, I guess I, I've gotten used to looking the wrong way. That, that, well, anyway. Um, I, I actually kind of think Mr. Mosher might be right. Let me ask you how to, how to, how to phrase this. So let's look at the, um, let's look for just a moment at the red line, which you can find at 17-12. So, um, currently, the way that it would read is, uh, no bicy, no bicyclist, roller skater, motorized transportation device user, or pedestrian shall exceed eight miles per hour, uh, while on the boardwalk. What, why not just say, no user of the boardwalk shall exceed eight miles per hour?
I think Mr. Mosher does raise a good point, and that is a much simpler way to go about it. Um, the issue is, under the vehicle code, we can only regulate certain types of devices, and so we've broken out the type of devices that we can regulate rather than just saying all types of, all users, um, and kind of going the route he suggested.
Are there, are there vehicles that could go on our boardwalk that we can't regulate?
I don't know all the different types of vehicles that could potentially be, but that's why we specifically did it that way, is because the vehicle code, you can only regulate, uh, things that the vehicle code allows you to, um, when it comes to the transportation devices, and so we've regulated all the different types of transportation devices that are defined in the vehicle code. Um, there could be potentially something that's not there, um, but that's the reason we went about it the way we did. But I, I couldn't name the other type of device.
Okay. I, I mean, I just, it's just a lot cleaner, and, uh, I mean, it, just simply the phrase, no user of the boardwalk shall exceed eight miles per hour. I mean, it just, it just nails everything that we could cover, and if for some reason we're not covering something that is in the vehicle code, I guess it's, I don't know. I, I'm, I'm having a tough time trying to come up with something right now where we, that wouldn't cover what we needed to cover for the boardwalk, and it, and it covers things that, you know, it's almost like when you're trying to do intellectual property work, and it says, all works, you know, all forms now and forever considered down the road, you know?
I'm, I'm fine with the change. I just wanted to explain the reason we went about it the way we did.
Okay. Um, if, if you're fine with that change, I would just recommend changing the next two also. Um, so instead of the way we've got it set up right here for unsafe operation, I would recommend the language just simply be, no user of the boardwalk shall engage in any activity that creates an unreasonable risk of injury to any person. Um, and then the next one would be, users of the boardwalk shall keep to the right of the center line except when passing. I mean, it just, you nail everything in, in that without having to delineate any of the discussions. Now, I wouldn't, I, I'm, I wouldn't, to, to Mr. Mosher's point, I wouldn't actually get rid of the definitions, uh, that have been inserted, simply because when you're looking at 12.540, 0.060, um, it, it does make sense to define that portion there. Um, so I, I couldn't come up with a more simple way of saying that, but in terms of 030, 040, and 050, it just strikes me that the, the simpler approach of just, no user of the boardwalk shall exceed eight miles per hour just seems to, to nail it down. Anyway, all right, um, I cannot see who's logging in right now, so just, yeah, um, so, you know, actually, I think Mr. Muldoon had had his hand up first, and then I'll go to Ms. Dixon.
I did. It was really to respond to, uh, to Maureen. Um, when I was in high school about three years ago, I thought this was a serious problem. Um, and I, I do think it's a real problem, Maureen. I hope you, I, you still send candy my way for Christmas, which we always love getting up here in the dais. I just think that the police resources are better spent doing other activities, um, or other regulations, if you will, and that the best way to deal with this is, um, is physical structures or barriers or, um, any physical, um, deterrent, I guess, that we can come up with. I think we still need to get creative, but I, I don't for one second think it's, it's not an issue because, um, people can go, go in pretty quickly, and I actually think that the, uh, the pedal bicyclers are often the worst offenders. Thanks.
All right, uh, Ms. Dixon.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I have a few comments to make, but just to address your changes, which I can conceptually support, I'm just thinking the, how they get, that language gets translated to signage. So...
I, I don't know how, I, I mean, you can have it however you want.
Well, I'm just ask, would ask staff, but anyway, that's to be determined. It's just to make sure that motorized bikes or whatever we want to say, or scooters, all that gets illustrated correctly. But let me just step back. So, uh, please indulge me while I just kind of summarize where we've been for the last six years, and, um, Maureen and others who have said, and, and Fred have said, we've talked about this ad nauseam. They've been, we've all had community meetings, we've, uh, sat around tables and, with PD, and we, I can assert that we've all had our hearts and minds in the right place, PD residents, we all are struggling to find a solution, but I think it's in front of us, but we just don't want to, uh, address it for, I don't know why. I, when we hear the potential for injury, in fact, there was supposed to be a speaker tonight, he wrote me yesterday that he was going to speak, so I don't know what happened. He had a video, which I have not seen, of a dog coming out of the front gate and getting run over by an electric bike twice, and they rushed him to the vet, and I think he survived. But, um, and we, we all know it's a problem. It's been a problem that's increased for the last several years. I, um, so let me just state, so as I said earlier, I've had 26 town halls, I think, maybe 27, and every single town hall, this has been a key issue that, and Public Works has been there, and police have been there to discuss it, and, and it all comes down to enforcement. People just ignore the sign, so I, it really is enforcement. Um, this, residents truly have been begging, begging the city, their city, to address these safety issues, even before, going back longer than six years, it was even with my predecessor, Mike Han. There was a file this thick about boardwalk issues. We did the study in 2017 on the boardwalk that was alluded to, and, and documented. The data is there, there are, there are, there is congestion on the boardwalk, and it is unsafe. I, I think the data, as I'll come to this point a couple of times, that the data clearly says that it, with the exception of COVID, because we don't have data, I, I think it really is a seasonal issue, because I, I'm on the boardwalk, frankly, just assessing the situation because it's been an issue for so long, and during the off-season, eh, there are not, I do not believe that there are as many problems from a crowd standpoint as there are, obviously, in the summer months, so I'll come back to this. We've had at least three study sessions, multiple community meetings and council sessions, and we, as someone said earlier, I really do not believe we could kick the can down the road. I do not feel that, uh, putting the enforcement is the solution to all of our issues here. I do not think that that, uh, is, um, what do I want to say? Is possible, uh, not realistic, uh, because just as the chief said, and, and Mr. Muldoon said, there are issues going on in the city. We've got 17,000 criminals released from prisons, and they're scattered all over California and coming into Orange County. And so I do see the, we all see the crime reports every month, and they are increasing. So we do have serious crime. We had a major traffic, traffic fatality on Coast Highway on Sunday morning at 10 o'clock. Who would think? Uh, so we do have issues, and I don't want to diminish the residents of the peninsula and their concerns because we have crime in other areas. So enforcement, I do not really think that we could put the whole solution to this age-old problem on enforcement. I don't, we could, even if we had an officer on every corner and street end, uh, that's not going to solve it, nor could we afford it, so I don't think it's realistic. Uh, just have to remind everybody, notwithstanding high school memories, the prom, the bike, the boardwalk is a promenade, it's not a bike path. It is ironic that Balboa Island has successfully restricted bicycles, maybe because it's just, it's a circular and it, it, they just do, and the residents come out and, and try to, uh, do their enforcement. So I, I have a, a thought, and I did bring this up in February, and, uh, I'll try it again. We don't need to do another study. Possible remedies. How about, consider, maybe I'll make a motion, see where that goes, to permit all bikes, because as many speakers said, it, uh, non-electric bikes can go just as fast, so let's deal with all bikes, let's not, let's not complicate enforcement. Permit all bikes to be on the boardwalk weekdays only, May through September. So take, not allow any bikes on weekends, only weekends during the summer, May through September, and then for the rest of the year, well... and then for the rest of the year, well, from September first, or October first, however we would decide, to May first, then bicycles can have free rein, all kinds of bikes, electric and manual. But I, I think we have to take, the problem time is summer, the problem days are weekends. It's not, they'll, I'm sure they'll be crowded weekdays in the summer, but just to get it off the weekends, that's the primary problem, and this could always be adjusted. And, but I would like to recommend that we try this next summer, starting May first, and through September first, that we would permit all bikes, both kinds, weekdays only, May through September, and enforce, so it'd be easy for the police to enforce. So no bikes on Saturday and Sunday, and no weekends. So I would like to make a motion to that effect, in addition to the change in the language that we discussed earlier. So that's my motion.
Before, before we get that, I need to ask, as a Brown Act matter, because this, that wasn't noticed, Mr. Harp, is that permissible, is that a permissible motion to make?
So it was noticed to basically provide direction to staff, so we could come back with an ordinance that effectuates what you're asking for, or the other option, so there's two options. Let me take a step back. One would be to basically revise the current ordinance that's, that's here, and bring it back for first reading next time with the changes that you're suggesting. The other would be to approve the ordinance as is tonight with, with the changes that the mayor made, and then bring a separate ordinance back that just addresses the issues related to...
Well, I interpreted, I interpreted the recommendations to staff, that's what we're doing, provide direction to staff regarding the use of motorized transportation.
So, so I had said at the beginning, what, what I'm trying to do right now is address the two issues that are split up. The first, the issue, the first issue is the, the proposed language of the ordinance, so we would be passing an ordinance tonight or not. And then the second issue would be to provide direction. So if, if...
That's all right. I mean, it's fine through the process at the City Attorney outline, that's fine. Let's just keep, move this forward. So, all right, I'll make, amend my motion to amend the municipal code, as the mayor suggested. I, I think that's fine, simplify. And then to provide the staff to return back with a proposed regulation that all bikes would be permitted to ride on the boardwalk weekdays only, May through September, no weekends, and every day in the balance of the year.
All right. I'm gonna make just a quick suggestion, because I'm gonna vote, I would vote no on that, but I would vote yes on the, the changes to the code. So that's why I'm trying to break the code change up, and then we would still, after we do that, I'm not, we're not done with the item. We would, we would do a discussion about, just like we would at a study session. I would suggest, we have ideas, we straw poll them as a recommendation to staff, and then, and then, and which we would include that in. So what I'm suggesting is that we basically have one motion that would include the modifications that I've, I've suggested on the code. We vote on that, then we have a discussion about proposed changes and recommendations to staff. We can straw poll those like we normally would during a study session, and then...
All right, that's fine.
Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay. Let's just focus for just a second then on the language, and I would just, I would just say, like, as I'm sitting here, the, um, the phrase "no user of" is not great. It's, it should be better, it's better "no person using the boardwalk," for example. Anyway, that's just, it's just cleaner that way. That, so basically, instead of, for point oh three oh, I would say, "No person using the boardwalk shall exceed eight miles per hour." Oh four oh, "No person using the boardwalk shall engage in any activity that creates an unreasonable risk of injury to any person." Oh five oh would read, "Any person using the boardwalk shall keep to the right of the center line, except when passing." Anyway, that's, that's my recommendation on the changes. So, so thinking specifically on the recommended ordinance, do we have any other discussion on that? And then we will come back with ideas. Okay.
You want that in the form of a motion now, then?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay, I, so move.
Okay.
I second.
All right, seconded by Ms. Dixon. Any discussion on that?
Just real quick, so that's items seventeen A and B.
Correct. Yes, and then we will, we will separately discuss C, which is the further direction, but the motion is on A and B with the revised language.
Yeah, so, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you. Couple questions. Okay, so Mr. Harp, with the changes outlined by the mayor, could you tell me essentially which parts we would be supporting with this motion? So the mayor changed the language, cleaned it up. Would you please tell me, practically speaking, what that means?
So what we did is, we specifically defined the different types of uses that the eight-mile-an-hour speed limit would apply to, the specific uses that unsafe operation would apply to, as well as the kind of rules of the road. So rather than each specific use, as far as bicyclist or roller skater, it would basically be any user, so anybody using the boardwalk, you know, couldn't go over eight miles per hour, they couldn't act in an unsafe manner, and they couldn't go to the right of the center line, except when passing.
Okay, and, um, does it affect...
It should keep to the right of the center line, except for when passing.
Does it affect the fines at all?
So that's separate from what the, the change the mayor just discussed. We, we did raise the fine from fifty dollars to two hundred dollars for, for most of the violations that, of, if there's a violation of the provisions. There's a five hundred dollar fine for a violation of the unsafe operations.
So the, the fines are already existing, and they're not going to be changed by this motion, correct?
Well, so this ordinance, so I think you're voting on the entire ordinance?
That's right.
So the fines would be changed?
Okay.
By voting for it. It'd go from fifty to two hundred dollars for most violations of this chapter.
All right, so that's my primary concern. So for that reason, I will not support the motion. But just so that we're, we're totally clear, the speed limit is already eight.
That's correct.
Okay. So I would, I would, of course, support that portion, but the, the fine portion I won't support. So I'll just vote against the motion, to keep it simple. And then, uh, the mayor's changes do not include anything specific, such as distinction between manual or motorized bicycles, correct?
That's right. He's not differentiating between the two. He's just basically saying, anybody that's using the boardwalk, you know, can't go over eight miles per hour.
Perfect. So it's, it's very well done, Mr. Mayor, in my opinion, but I won't be supporting the increase in fines.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote. Oh, you know what? Because we don't have the clerk, I'm gonna just take a hand vote, so all in favor, raise your hand.
For the record, everyone voted in favor, except for Councilmember Muldoon, who voted no.
Okay. All right, with that, let's move into item, uh, C now, which is recommendations to staff on a, on a go-forward basis. So the first, um, from Councilmember Dixon is a, is to bring back a, an ordinance that would permit all bikes weekdays only, May through September. I'm not, I'm gonna just take ideas, and then, you know, we can straw poll them afterward.
That's fine.
So, Ms. Dixon, did you have any, anything else beyond that?
Well, I do have, I could give you all my, a few, I got four ideas here. Restrict motorized vehicles every day, May through September, but I, I think we should apply all bikes the same, so I, I won't go there. Um, and basically, I come down to permit all bikes weekday, or I could say restrict all bikes, May through September, seven days a week, seven days a week, but I'm not going to go there. So permit all bikes weekdays only, May through September, and additional enforcement. I'd like to get something in about additional enforcement, strengthen enforcement, augment enforcement, put an emphasis on enforcement.
Okay. All right. Um, any other recommendations for staff for us to, to straw poll on this item?
Other motorized vehicles in this, just bikes?
So, well, so, so let's be clear about what we're doing real, real quick. I just, admittedly, let me, let me work on this. So what we've, what we've agendized is C, which is what we're doing right now, which is provide staff with further direction regarding implementation of a prohibition of motorized or other transportation devices, including electric bikes on the Oceanfront Boulevard. So, so that's what we're talking about, and so if you have any, any ideas that you'd like to propose that we bring back, that's, this is the time to do so, and we'll just, I'll straw poll it after I, I gather. Okay.
Well, I didn't mean to exclude scooters or other things, but since we've changed the language...
Well, we, well, hang on. To be clear, we didn't, we, we've, yeah, okay. Um, it's, I mean, if you'd like it to only be pedestrians on the boardwalk, if that's what your intent is, in...
Might be a way to do it.
In your, in May through September with more enforcement, if, if that's what you're trying to do, then, um, then that's, that's the way to probably phrase it, is pedestrians only. Okay.
I like that, actually.
Very clear.
Okay. All right. Any other, Mr. Muldoon?
Yes. I appreciate staff doing a little field trip within the city, but I would prefer to have a more extensive search at how different places, including internationally, are dealing with this issue. It could be a, a certain grade put in the, in the walkway that makes it uncomfortable to go at a fast speed on a motor, or, or a non-motored bicycle. It could be the type of, um, uh, speed bump that has a flat top on it. I'm not as concerned, really, with how pleasant, how pleasant the experience is going to be on roller skates, or whatever kids are on these days, as I am the safety of, of those who are on it. But that being said, we do want to try to, try to balance the, the rights of the users, and, and that would be my ultimate goal. So often, Europe is really in front of us when it comes to bicycle safety, so I know that a lot of coastal communities as well, where this has to be a problem. So I would be curious to see what we can do to slow down bicycles. Thank you. From a, from a physical deterrent standpoint.
Give me just a second, folks. Okay. All right. Anyone else? Mr. Duffield.
So I would like to know, after, after a period of time, how the Castaways' walkway worked out. I, my family uses that a lot, and, uh, my wife even told me about it today, that, uh, she noticed these improvements, or whatever they're called, changes. There was more signage, and I, I believe in, in this, uh, device that you attach to the surface. So I'd like to know if, after six months of that, or three months, whatever time period, if there had been any, um, issues with tripping on it, or the, the kind of things we're thinking might not be good about it. So I think that's a great beta test place for this. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
We just want to restate how we clarify that.
Oh, I'll, I'll bring it back. Yeah, no problem. Anything, anything else before I start? Okay. Mr. Avery would like us, like a staff discussion about potentially widening the boardwalk as well?
The feasibility.
Or, or second boardwalk? Okay.
It's not detached.
Any other discussions? All right, we're gonna straw poll the following four, and if you, if I've misstated, anyone's, let me know. Um, allow pedestrians only, May through September, on the weekends, with more enforcement. Bring back discussion about slowing down bicycles using physical deterrents, with a study of what other cities have been doing. Okay. Bring back how Castaways has worked out, and then, um, bring back a discussion about the feasibility of widening the boardwalk, or adding a second boardwalk.
Separating bikes from pedestrians.
Go ahead, Ms. Leon.
If I could just clarify on that one, because we do have a CIP project to do, really study on that, community outreach of those kinds of strategies. And right now, it's just on hold because of the, you know, with our budgetary. But once that's ready to go, it'll move forward. So would this inform before we would potentially move forward with that CIP now, that that had already been approved? I, I just want to make sure I understand how kind of we are working through on this process.
Yeah, I think the, I think the, I think the point being, um, that maybe it's time to take a, uh, my guess is, it's more a question, should we take it off the hold, take the hold off of that CIP item?
Okay, okay.
That's, I think that's probably the, the better way of looking at it.
Okay.
Sorry, I had to think about, I had to think about that for a second. All right, I'm gonna straw poll this then. So we're gonna start with, um, so it would, just to be clear, when we're talking, talking this through, are we talking May first through the end of September? Are we talking Memorial Day through Labor Day?
Well, we have, that's a good question. We have standard calendar. What, what's best for public, or, please, what's best for Memorial Day through Labor Day? That's kind of a standard...
I think that's our traditional summer season.
That's fine.
We typically think, that time period.
All right. Okay, so the first one we're going to do is straw poll whether you'd like to, uh, recommend to staff to bring back a, an ordinance that would allow pedestrians only on weekends, Memorial Day through Labor Day, with stepped-up enforcement. So if you'd like to see that brought back, please raise your hand.
So Councilmember, uh, Mayor Protem, Brad Avery, Councilmember Brenner, Councilmember Dixon, and Councilmember Herbin voted in favor of bringing that back, and all other councilmembers voted against.
Okay. Uh, the next for discussion would be, um, bring back discussion about slowing down bicycles using physical deterrents, um, with a, an emphasis on reviewing what other cities have done. If you'd like to see that brought back, raise your hand.
All councilmembers voted in favor.
Okay. And then, uh, direction to, to staff to bring back how, how the Castaways experiment works out. Please raise your hand.
All councilmembers were in favor.
And then, um, a feasibility, just, I'm sorry, let me rephrase that. Taking the hold off of the CIP item that would review the feasibility of, uh, widening the boardwalk, or adding a second boardwalk. If you'd like to see that brought back, raise your hand.
So Mayor Protem Avery, Councilmember Brenner, Councilmember Dixon, Councilman Herdman, and Councilmember Muldoon voted in favor, and, uh, all other councilmembers voted against.
All right, thank you. Okay. Uh, with that, let's talk COVID. So, um...
That's gonna be easier.
Yeah, that, all right, Ms. Leon.
Just real quick, I think that C. Clerk needs to read the title, title of the ordinance.
Okay, well...
Amended ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty-four, and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, amending Chapter twelve point fifty-four of Title twelve of the Newport Beach Municipal Code pertaining to the Oceanfront Boardwalk Safety Program.
All right. Okay, Ms. Leon.
Okay, I'll, I'll keep it brief. I think it's, I'll just do a few updates on the statistics, and then Chief Boiles can talk a little bit, too, on, on our specific cases. Just very briefly, as a reminder, the, uh, the governor put together this framework for reopening, and, um, as you know, we're in this red substantial tier, that's that second tier, um, on the, on the four risk levels that we're in, and data gets updated, results get updated of where you are, what our numbers look like, because there's two key, key metrics, the number of new cases per hundred thousand, and then the positivity rate per hundred thousand. Um, and that gets updated every week on Tuesday, and so today, it's really good news. We're, first, we're the third week into the red tier, and you do have to be in, in a tier for three weeks before you can move to a better one, a more opened one. And the good news here is that our metrics for Orange County are coming up, that we are now, our metrics meet that next level, that moderate level, the orange tier. So that's very positive, with the three point six cases per hundred thousand and three point one percent positivity rate. So those both are well within that orange tier rate. So if we meet it for another week, we could be moving into the, to that next tier, which essentially opens up a lot more in terms of the, um, numbers that are allowed within. For example, I think it's on, um, like dining, from going from the twenty-five percent to fifty percent allowed indoors, that type of thing. So I think that'll be very good news, and then it's generally good news saying that the county's doing fairly... And then it's generally good news saying that, uh, the county's doing fairly well in the, in the, um, number of cases, just being very, continuing to come down. Part of that is also, um, uh, an interesting point, and I think this was pointed out in the, um, the Register too, Dr. Chow, or the county health officer, uh, talked a bit about this, that part of, uh, the metrics go around testing. And, um, because if the testing, the amount of testing that's happening in, in the county is less than the statewide average, they add factors where they, um, your numbers look worse. And, but if you're doing more testing than the state average, they kind of give you credit for it, and you get your number lowered. So it's kind of in our interest to make sure that there's a robust testing going on. So I just want to remind, um, those who are listening that the county's done a lot in terms of offering testing sites, and in particular, they have two super sites, and one is very close by because it's at the Costa Mesa Fairgrounds, uh, right here, um, right next door. So it's easy to sign up. I've done it myself and gotten tested there. It's a drive-through testing, and I got results in less than 24 hours. So I, I think it's, uh, it's a good system they have right now. So certainly wanna encourage those who are essential workers, um, even whether you're symptomatic or not. So it's also for asymptomatic, for, um, you know, feeling fine, but just wanna be checked. As an essential worker, you can go there. So just wanna provide that as a reminder for folks, um, out there. So on our side, as we continue to see these very good, um, numbers coming and the trends happening, um, we are, um, focused on our services that we're providing here and what we can open up. We do, um, it was mentioned earlier, um, really great milestone in getting our library reopened starting yesterday, um, and, and moving forward with that. We are looking at our City Hall Community Center and Senior Center. Right now we're targeting October 5th and gearing up, um, to do that. We'll follow all the state guidance, of course, but I think that's particularly good news. I think at the last council meeting, maybe it was Councilmember Muldoon mentioned, what about the fitness centers at our, our Oasis, if they're allowed in other places? So we, we do fit into that category. So that's what we'll do with the same type of, right now the parameters are 10% capacity to allow, but, so we'll work through that. The one area that's really been, um, pushed quite a bit by cities, um, is the whole playgrounds. While the parks are open, the playgrounds are closed, the state has said. Um, the playground equipment is mixing of different people not in the same household. So we've certainly been pushing on the county side, and the county's been pushing the state and the guide, guidance even through yesterday, um, the county, Dr. Chow, uh, continued to emphasize that, um, playgrounds are not to be open. So, um, we're certainly gonna look to continue to push on that one there. So I think those are the main things I wanted to just bring up as a highlight, and then I'll just turn it over very quickly to Chief Boils, see if there's anything he would like to update all of you on.
Good evening. Uh, I'll just expand a little bit on what Ms. Leang was talking about with the, um, the trending statistics. The Orange County hospitalizations for COVID, both ICU and normal hospitalizations are now reaching the mid-April number. So you may remember, a couple of weeks ago, I said we were at the May numbers, now we're back to the April numbers. So once we get to March and February and then on, that's where we wanna go. So we're trending in the right direction. Our county skilled nursing facility outbreaks, um, are also decreasing. They're back to the early June numbers. In Newport Beach, we had six skilled nursing facilities that experienced outbreaks just as recently as last month, and we're down to only one of them. Over at Hoag, we got some information back today that their confirmed positives last week were between one and five a day in their emergency room. And the peak was in July where they were seeing over 30 a day in the emergency room. So we're seeing a, a very significant drop off there. Um, and the COVID sick that were admitted are only about one to three per day right now that are actually getting admitted because they're sick enough to get admitted. And the peak was about 13 to 15 per day back in July. So just kind of an indicator to show you how far we've come. As far as our fire department transportation, we haven't had any positive transports in over a week now, which is our longest run since the, uh, the big surge back in July. So that's a drop off. And then the other dichotomy to that is our week over, or our year over year, so 2020, this time in 2020 as opposed to 2019, our call load and our transports to the hospital is increasing. It increased about 5% last month, but our, our COVID positives are significantly down. So like, we're taking, um, people to the hospital for different reasons now. They're starting to come out and, um, you know, they're coming out and doing whatever it is people do. So with that, I, uh, I think you heard enough from me earlier today, and that's the end of my report.
Thank you. All right. Is that it? Great. Um, yeah, one, one quick note on the testing, um, issue. One of the odd things, odd things about having the tier system tied to a, um, the number of tests that you, you have in terms of that adjusted, is that as counties see their, their numbers go down as fast as Orange County does, people are less likely to get tested. So then it, it adjusts your case count up. So it's something that, um, Dr. Chow had mentioned on the, on the call that Grace and I are on, on, on Friday mornings. So it's gonna be just, it'll be interesting to see how this goes, um, on the, on the tier side of things. Do I wanna go get a test? Oh, well, so, so one of the things that, uh, Dr. Chow has mentioned is that, uh, he does encourage, um, essential workers to go get, um, to go get tested if you're asymptomatic. But, uh, because of the concerns about having a potential backlog, and if you're seeing an increase, you need to be able to get a quick response, he's concerned about creating a backlog by encouraging all asymptomatic people to go get tested. Yeah, it's, I know, there's a lot of like, there's a lot of catch-22s when you're trying to deal with the data. But look, if schools reopen next week, um, which, they're anticipated to do, uh, teachers and people who work at schools are considered essential workers, they can get tested for free. So just a quick reminder to everybody on, on that front. All right, Madam Clerk?
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council at this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted for the prevailing side.
All right, do we have any motions? Okay, tonight we're gonna adjourn in memory of Tom Naughton, uh, who was a longtime president of the Airport Working Group of Orange County, uh, who passed away on September 10th at the age of 95. Um, Tom enjoyed an extensive and storied career, career in the field of aviation. Born August 19th, 1925 in Cleveland, Ohio, he married his wife Jean on October 31st, 1945. The same day he graduated from the Navy Cadet Corps. He served as a Navy carrier pilot and flew off of four different carriers, including the USS Roosevelt, USS Midway, USS Cabot, and the USS Ranger. He was also in the Ferry Command for his last tour of duty and had, uh, hours in every airplane that the Navy had. He graduated from Georgia Institute of Technology in 1951. Tom worked for McDonnell Douglas for 38 years before retiring in 1989. His projects and positions included being program manager for American Airlines, MD-80 Aircraft, senior project engineer to the American Airlines DC-10s, and the list goes on and on and on. Following his McDonnell Douglas career, he became president of the Airport Working Group of Orange County. AWG is a community advocacy nonprofit organization, unique among its peers nationwide. Since its founding in 1982 to represent community associations and citizens of Newport Beach significantly impacted by airport, aircraft operations at John Wayne Airport, AWG has been transformed into a county-wide organization with its 17-member board representing communities from Newport Beach to the city, cities of Tustin, Orange, and beyond. And I have to say, uh, this would not be complete without mentioning his love for the Oasis Senior Center. He actually was a Tuesday greeter at Oasis from 2010 to 2020. And he played, and I swear, Jean made me say this, he played the gut bucket with John Valerie, uh, Valeriano at Oasis every Friday for lunch. Tom is survived by his wife Jean, and they were due to celebrate their 75th wedding anniversary on October 31st of this year. Um, additionally, he leaves behind two sons, Chaz and Larry, and a daughter, uh, Charlene. And Jean, we love you. And, uh, Tom, we miss you, man. With that, we'll stand adjourned. Thank you.